Welcome, everybody. This is the, let's see, August 8th, 2024, meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023, signing of the Acts of '23, extending certain COVID measures, adopted during the state of emergency, suspended during provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided far in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling (508) 945-4410, conference ID 220263711, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting in the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. And before I continue with our procedural steps, I will ask everybody to shut off any device that makes any sort of noise or vibration, please. And when you do ask to speak, there's a five-minute limit. You need to be recognized and then not start talking until you arrive at the microphones so that we don't have to hear a very scary knock on the window reminding us of that. So, so the first thing we do is roll call of all board members to authorize this form of meeting, starting with Dave Veitch.
Yes, David H. Veitch, and I authorize this form of meeting.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David Snixon, I approve.
All C. Semple, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Steve DeBora, I approve.
Virginia Fowick, I approve.
And Randy Podash, I approve as well. If any citizens or non-board members participating via the call, please give your phone, actually via phone only, give the last four digits of your name and tell, well, actually, the last four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. We begin meetings by having staff read the applications. Sarah Clark to my right. Then the representative or you will present your appeal. After that, we will hear if there's anyone in favor, and they may speak for up to five minutes. And then we will read a summary, I will read all the letters that we received. Sometimes they'll be summarized depending on length. Anyone against the appeal or application will have an opportunity to speak or ask questions. Then there'll be a period for the applicant to rebut any of that. Board members will ask questions, will hear further information, close the public hearing, deliberate, and usually we take a vote. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close the meeting via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. The first thing we do is we have minutes from, I believe, July 11th and July 18th, if that's accurate. We're going to take them one at a time and have an opportunity for anyone who has changes. So who would like to move the July 11th? Paul?
I will move that we adopt the minutes of July 11, 2024, as published.
And would you like to second that first for discussion?
Second that for dis, okay, I'll second that for discussion, yeah.
And does anyone have any changes?
I would propose an amendment to, and this is being on page four, on around the middle of the page, under deliberations. It says, Mr. Semple moved to approve application number 24-028. I would move to insert the wording to ensure, to include the originally, the originally proposed garage design, comma, with conditions, and Mr. Veitch seconded.
Okay, does anybody else have any additions, subtractions, multiplications?
I would agree with that addition. I'll amend my motion to include that change.
And Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
So let's vote for the amended motion. You vote yes, Dave?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul? Vote yes.
As do I. All right, moving on to July 11th, Paul? I mean, July 18th.
July 18th, I was not present, so I'll have someone else move to adopt those minutes.
I wasn't present either on that day.
Dave, why don't you make the amendment?
First, I will move, well, go ahead.
And I'll second.
Okay, I would move to adopt the minutes of July 18th.
I second that.
Does anyone have any changes or modifications?
So I would move a, I would move that on page one, again, in the middle of the page, sentence begins with Chairperson Person Person Podash conducted a roll call of the board to achieve a quorum. That we strike the wording, the adding that Paul Semple moved, et cetera, down through Ms. David Veitch seconded, so it would just read Chairperson Podash conducted a roll call of the board to achieve a quorum. Vote six, oh, oh.
Or to establish a quorum, even better.
To, okay, to establish a quorum.
Okay, that sounds good.
I second that.
And how do you vote?
Yes.
Veitch votes yes.
What are we left with here? Do you, do you vote?
I would vote to approve as a man.
And as do I. All right, we're good. We have a backup crew. All good. All right, so with that, what we're going to do, if anyone has a list, you need to turn to page two because we are going to actually start with 35 Trout Pond Lane, application 24-079 today.
Application number 24-079, Robert Poitras, 35 Trout Pond Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 35 Trout Pond Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 7I Block 43, Lot C 264. The applicant proposes to change, alter, expand, a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 37.2 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required, and 22 feet from the easterly obiter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed additions will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered, is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,506 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 1,996 square feet, where 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 22,955 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Okay, so who do we have for Trout Pond Lane? Oh, very good. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Robert Poitras, 35 Trout Pond Lane. Thank you for the opportunity today to present my proposed addition project. I'm seeking a special permit based on the plans and application that were submitted to the board. Addition on level one is for an 18-by-20-foot family room with a gable roof and, and an extension to the kitchen, 6-by-17, with a shed-style roof. The second floor is roughly 18-by-35 feet and will consist of a shed-style dormer that will contain the second bedroom, the second full bath, and an office space. The property is in the River Bay neighborhood. The area is mix of capes, ranches, and a few colonials. The house was built in 1984 and is zoned R60, which, as you know, requires a 60,000-square-foot lot, 40-foot front set yard setback, and 25-foot side and rear yard setbacks. The lot size is 22,995. The front setback is 37 feet, and the side setbacks are 22 feet, making the property existing non-conforming. The maximum building coverage is 2,900 square feet. The lot coverage is currently 6.6% of the lot. The shed and the proposed addition will result in total coverage of 9.1% or 2,095 square feet, well below the 2,900 square feet allowed. The roof ridge will be 20 feet 6 inches in height, and the maximum allowed is 26 feet 6 inches. In regard to the nonconformity of the addition, the side setbacks for the addition will be compliant with the R60 requirements. The side setback will be 25 feet on the east side and 40 feet on the west side. The rear setback will be 128 feet, providing plenty of distance from the neighbors to the rear. We don't anticipate any impact to the neighborhood properties or runoff by the addition. The site is sloping, and the addition takes advantage of the current slope to the east, providing some windows in the basement level. In terms of square footage, it's currently the smallest house on the street. The addition will bring it closer to the square footage of average homes in the area. I think you will find that the proposed addition will be in good keeping with the existing cape-style home and other neighborhood homes with white cedar shingles, double-hung windows, and architectural asphalt roofing. The use as a single-family remains as such, consistent with the neighborhood. Septic tank needs to be relocated, so we need to reapply for that application. There will be no impact to traffic flow except for the occasional delivery. We will minimize noise levels by avoiding exterior work during the summer months and will limit work from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We will make every effort to minimize waste and ensure materials are recycled where possible. We will assure the street remains clean and be good to our neighbors. There will be no chance to the existing utilities, and I think the last two items are not applicable to this particular application. So that's really what I had today to speak to. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, very good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known, raise your hand. Seeing none, I will read the one correspondence that we received from our health agent, Judith Giorgio, on 8/6/2024. She reviewed the plan to add in addition to the property, including a second floor. The property will remain two bedrooms. However, the addition will encroach on the existing septic tank, and so, as you said, you need to get permits for the relocation of the tank. And that concludes our correspondence. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this project or has a question? Seeing none, question from the board. Ginny?
I have no questions.
We're going to go right around this way, so.
Steve has no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
And no questions.
And no questions for me. So Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
As do I. So deliberations. Now we'll start with Ginny, again.
Yeah, thank you for your summary. It was very well done, and I think the project is great. It meets all of our criteria and looks like a terrific project.
All right, very good. What do you think, Steve?
I also think it's a nice project. You did a very nice job in your presentation. Thank you. I don't see any problems with this. It's not affecting any of the existing nonconformities. I think it's a nice project.
Great. Lee?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. Looks like a great project, meets our criteria.
And Paul?
And I agree as well.
I don't see that in any way it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Ed?
Certainly agree with my colleagues. The only point is the shed, because it is less than 100 square feet, I don't even know that it needs to be included in any of the calculations, so you can adjust it down.
Good. I noticed that too. Okay, and Dave?
And I agree with all previous.
And so just a couple of the specific criteria that I didn't hear noted, but I'm not objecting that you do meet them. Number one, the adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to the maximum lot or building coverage and setbacks. It's compatible with the other structures in the neighborhood. These are very important, you know, criteria that you absolutely meet, in my opinion, and the impact of scale, sighting, and mass on the neighborhood visual character. It's a nice project, and I also vote, I would also vote when we vote to, to approve it. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. It sounded as if our standard conditions would be applicable, given the way you want to proceed anyhow, so I'll move to approve on the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and between June 30th and Labor Day, there be no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny?
I vote yes.
Yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next application is going to be what's listed as the last one, 83 Partun McCott Road, and that is Attorney Litchfield, application 24-080, when everyone's ready. Thank you. Oh, yes, yes, yes. I got to get my kind of my book.
Application number 24-080, Spencer H. Dedrick and Sarah B. Dedrick, Carib William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 83 Potenemica Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 8J Block 50, Lot C 155. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand, a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 20.9 feet from the westerly obiter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,461 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,059 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 20,400 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicant, Sarah, and Spencer Dedrick, who are with us virtually. This is a fairly simple proposal to create a larger first-floor bedroom on what is a fairly typical River Bay lot. If Sarah would be gracious enough to put up either the site plan or the elevation, but I think, I know you've all been out there, and we, we waited to file so that this could be heard at the same hearing as the Trout Pond application to save on your mileage. We thought that was considerate, and we did it in that way. That is the lot as shown there. We have a proposed conforming addition in the rear. It's 31, 30, almost 32 feet from the sideline, 70-odd feet from the rear lot line, but the house itself happens to be marginally non-conforming on the other side, where nothing is proposed. But like all of the lots in River Bay, it does not have the currently required 60,000 square feet. So I'll go into the criteria as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks. Again, we have, thank you, Sarah, that's the proposed front elevation. You would see the bedroom behind the garage in the rear. As to adequacy of site, we have a typical River Bay half-acre lot with very low coverage, 7.1%, and a modest house. We have an existing west-side sideline nonconformity. I think you can approve the special permit based on the finding that the site is adequate for the addition of a larger first-floor bedroom, which meets all setbacks and is completely compliant as to coverage, as to compatibility. On the third page of the handout is indicated, we have the smallest footprint, somewhat more than 1,400 square feet, smallest of the adjacent properties, and coverage of 7.1%. We have a low gross floor area, even with a full basement. We are compatible now, and it will remain so if you approve the special permit. The addition of the bedroom at the rear, while increasing the size of a house, obviously is reasonable. It remains compatible as to coverage, living area, and gross floor area calculations, and meets all dimensional requirements. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, it's fairly simple. This is a Borkland hearing. Essentially, there is no increase in nonconformity. As to the suitability of site, the site has been suitable for residential use for the last half-century. There are no wetlands or environmental considerations involved. As to scale, sighting, mass, views, and vistas, mass is not really applicable to what's on the screen there. It's a simple, full cape, set 43 or 44 street feet back from the street. It's without any negative impact on views, vistas, and it has a positive impact on streetscape, and if you approve the special permit, you can do so based on the finding that the appropriate and simple design to match the house, and again, mostly behind the existing garage, is without impact on streetscape, no impact on views or vistas. The use remains compatible. There is no change. It's residential. As to adequacy of water and sewer, we have town water in a four-bedroom home. There is no change. The health agent comments in that regard and suggests that we are required to have a five-foot casement opening into the new den that is shown on the plans which you have. The other criteria of traffic flow and safety, noise, and litter are not at issue. So as you know, the question is whether constructing a new first-floor master bedroom, completely compliant as to all dimensional and bulk requirements of our bylaw, and thus without any change in setbacks or increase in nonconformities, whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing slightly nonconforming house on a nonconforming lot. As expanded, we're still less than three-quarters of allowable coverage. The addition will have minimal impact, essentially no impact on streetscape. It's 32 feet from the easterly lot line, where only 25 feet is required, and the gross floor area and living area will remain compatible or comparable to the nearby properties. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think that you can find the proposed addition meeting all zoning requirements is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this project? Please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the two correspondences. One from our health agent, Judith Giorgio, received on 8/6/2024. She reviewed the plan to renovate and add in addition to the property. The property has four bedrooms, and the proposed addition will remain a four-bedroom layout. However, a five-foot cased opening in the proposed den from the living room must be added. The addition must be partially on a slab to maintain its required 10-foot setback from the leach pit. This is shown on the proposed site plan and is acceptable. Next, we have a letter from Tim Bailey and Katie McDonald from 778 Riverview Drive, received on 7/26/2024. It states that Tim and his wife Katie have carefully reviewed the plans for the proposed addition to the house located at 83 Palm New McCott Road by Spencer and Sarah Dedrick. We abut the subject property in the rear with our property located at 778 Riverview Drive, and it's our feeling that the addition in question does not pose any detriment of any kind. In fact, we find the style and scale of the addition to be consistent with the architecture in our neighborhood of River Bay Estates. We therefore pledge our support for the proposed project. And that concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a specific question about this application? Seeing none, questions from the board? Dave?
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
No questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
And no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
And I have no questions either.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
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 And yes. Paul? Oh, yeah, we already did that. So, yeah, Paul, deliberations.
All right. What was the name of that road again?
You can read it. It's right in front of you.
This is clearly a nice, a nice change, and certainly is not detrimental in any way to the neighborhood, so I will vote in favor of it.
Lee, what do you think?
I agree with Paul. I think it's appropriate, it's modest, and it will be great to have a first-floor master.
And Steve?
I think it's a nice project. Most of the addition is, is hidden from the street, and it doesn't affect the, the one nonconforming setback on the opposite side of the house, so I have no issues.
Ginny? Ginny?
Agree with my colleagues, no issues, beautiful home, thoughtful project, meets all of our criteria, not substantially more detrimental.
And Dave Nixon?
It is not in any way substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Ed?
And I agree with my colleagues.
And Davee?
Yeah, yes, I agree. And then I, I just thought of a question I forgot to ask. And I, I thought, especially looking at the map and all that, I'm just wondering, Bill, I, I don't remember if Eve and I was in attendance to. I, I'm wondering what the, the process, the thought process of town meeting within rezoning this entire area to R sixty was motivated by?
The, if I could, Madam Chairman.
Please.
Brief, brief. The, the notion was that zoning of larger areas of town, this was the sort of northwest section of town. It made sense because of the potential for water, for wells and watershed and that interest. At the time, there were more larger tracts of undeveloped land south of Old Queen Anne Road. And it was felt that separating River Bay didn't make any sense. So the entire broader area was, was owned R sixty.
Great, thanks.
And it brought us a lot of business, I think.
Mr. Riley refers to that as his annuity.
Right, yes. Okay, so with that, Paul?
I will move to approve the application as submitted. Do you see any problem with our standard conditions, Bill?
I, I don't see any. And if there are any issues with, with not completing construction by June, we will come back to you, but I think they're reasonable.
All right. I'll move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. And between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
Davee, seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
As do I, it's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to go to fifty-three Marshview Road. And let's see. That is number one on the list. And that is application twenty-four dash zero four seven.
Application number twenty-four dash zero four seven, Elvira James Mastrobono and Laura Elizabeth Mastrobono. Karen William F. Riley, Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. Zero two six three three. Owners are property located at fifty-three Marshview Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, eight C, Block twenty-six, Lot S thirty-eight. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling and proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered as a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of Section Six of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is nine hundred fifty-five square feet, seven point five percent and the proposed building coverage is one thousand seven hundred eighty-eight square feet, fourteen percent, or fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming and it contains twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-five square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section Six and Section Five, be of the protective bylaw. This was continued from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
We should have a commercial while we're waiting.
Well, ladies, featuring polar.
Yes, sure that, yep. All right, Mr. Riley, welcome.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Jim and Laura Mastrobono, who are present here today. And Karen, of course. So I hope your memories are better than mine, not have to refresh myself by going and watching the last hearing.
I was going to say, would you like to just tell us what's new, what's changed?
Yes.
That'd be great.
I have my review of zoning board concerns. So the Sarah, would you put up the first slide that shows the proposed building? There you go, thank you. All right, so the, there were concerns addressed about several aspects of the criteria. One was that several mentioned, well, they didn't think it met criteria number one. That's to say that the site was not adequate for the proposed building. And that might have been because the, they were concerned about the change in elevation of this lot above the street. Because the, the building itself meets all setbacks. The building coverage as proposed has been reduced from fourteen percent to thirteen point seven percent. And the, they've, the current proposal, if you look at the site plan carefully, you can see that the top of foundation has been lowered by a foot. So they're reducing the grade of the lot by another foot. I think perhaps some members like myself have difficulty visualizing things that don't actually yet exist in real time. And so looking at this property, you have to visualize that the top of foundation is two feet lower than the existing top of foundation. And so the top of foundation now is three feet above the street level. So street level is elevation fourteen, which is on, you know, the site plan. And top of foundation is elevation seventeen. So we're only three feet above the street level. And some members were concerned about the height of the building above the street. And I hope that clarifies that in a manner that's satisfactory. The and many times, I'm before you presenting a building that is either exceeds the current maximum coverage, because it's already non-conforming, or clients who want to bring it right up to the maximum of allowable coverage. And the, this is a situation where the Mastrobonos are not trying to maximize the building. The original proposal was fourteen percent. They removed the front porch with the columns that somebody didn't like. And so now we're at thirteen point seven percent. So I think that in terms of size of the site being adequate for the project, you know, one of the things, I don't usually find wisdom in our zoning bylaw, but one of the things I think was wise in our zoning bylaw is the use of a percentage rather than a raw number in determining, you know, allowable building coverage. Because then all lots are equal. You know, you get fifteen percent, you know, up to twenty thousand square feet. But, you know, so that I think if we're coming in at thirteen point seven percent, even if it's a small lot, which is thirteen point seven percent of a small lot, which by the way, in our interpretation, means it's a small house. But that's really for you folks to decide. The, we also think that this is an area where we think the gross floor area is somewhat deceiving. Karen's current design has a living area on the first floor of twelve hundred and six square feet. And considering some of the projects we've been in here, this would fit in the master bedroom of some of those projects. So I think that's another way of establishing that clearly this is not, you know, an attempt to maximize. You know, these folks have owned this house for twenty years, family's grown. This is going to be their retirement home. Unless, like me, they never retire. But, so they need decent living space. There's no basement in this building. And Mr. Mastrobono is standing here, he's a pretty big guy, they have pretty big sons. So they bump into each other a lot in the current house, which is only nine hundred square feet. So I think that all these things emphasize how modest the size of the house is. So another thing is several members mentioned that the house was surrounded by small ranches, buildings built in the, like this one, in the fifties and sixties, when people would build a small summer cottage, no basement, no heat, just, we're going to hang here for the summertime. And when it gets hot, we open the windows and the wind blows through and keeps us cool. So unfortunately, none of that stuff works anymore. So for a retirement home, the Mastrobonos wanted to have a suitable master suite, which they put on the second floor. If you look at the floor plan, the other two bedrooms on the master floor are actually quite modest. And again, to differentiate it from many of the applications that come before you, where they have three master bedrooms, each, each bedroom having its own private bath. Here, you know, that's not what they've proposed. And again, I think that is a point where it shows the modesty of their proposal. The, the, but in terms of the buildings that surround it, visible from this property, there are four two-story homes. Twenty Marshview, thirty-eight Marshview, fifty-eight Marshview, eighty-two Marshview and a hundred Marshview. Well, maybe they can't see a hundred, but they can almost see a hundred. And from their new home, from the second floor, they can see a hundred. But, so the, there are, you know, some modest ranches next door. Although the immediate abutment on Pine Ridge is a two-story house also. That's the house where Dave was talking about, looking over the fence and. So there are, so as a two-story house, this is not an outlier. This is, really fits into the fabric of this ever-changing neighborhood. I know you know, some people think, well, Harding's Beach Hills, the entire subdivision is a neighborhood. But I think that, you know, for this board, when considering neighboring properties, you like to consider properties that are in fairly close proximity to the building that's being, the project's being discussed. And I don't find that unreasonable. But that's why I wanted to emphasize that these two-story buildings are visible from fifty-three. So the the other thing is because we're lowering the building, we don't think we're impacting anybody's views and vistas beforehand. But we know by lowering the building even more, that we're definitely not. And the, if you drove through the neighborhood, for instance, if you drove up Pine Ridge Road, you would see a design virtually identical to this design. Because, and how do I know, aside from driving around there today? Because I represented Karen's design before this August party getting approved about five years ago. Or was it seven years ago? It was a while ago. But, I mean, it's virtually identical to this design. And so I think that this design does in fact fit into the fabric of the neighborhood. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Karen now to go through the changes that she made.
Karen Kempton, architect for Laura and Jim Mastrobono. So Bill's already gone through that we have lowered the house an additional foot from our last proposal. And our last proposal had the first floor one foot lower than the existing first floor. And now we are two feet lower than the existing first floor. By dropping the house down, obviously that has also dropped the ridge height down. So the ridge height now is only seven feet above the existing ridge. So that's pretty minimum to try and fit second floor space on this, on this house. In order to disguise that, we've done a different variety of dormers on the front of the house. Most with different heights, wall heights. For example, these dormers, they're all set in from the corners of the house. They don't stretch all the way over. These dormers are also set in, this one's set in two feet, this one's set in a foot. And I believe this one's set in another two feet. The wall height of this dormer is only six and a half feet above the second floor. And the wall height of the other dormers are seven feet, three inches. Or seven feet, four inches was pretty minimum on the second floor. And that was all done to keep the height of the second floor and the massing and the scale down. We have eliminated the dormer on the rear on the southeast corner.
Sarah, let Sarah put that up.
Right. That dormer right originally came all the way to the left end. So we've pulled it back to soften that wall height for their closest to butter, who is on the east side. These changes reduced the living space by a hundred square feet. And the building coverage, as noted, has been changed from fourteen percent to thirteen point seven percent. The other changes we discussed were possibly locating the garage on the west side of the property with access only to Bucks Creek. The concern with this was that the garage would be actually twenty-four feet long. If we can go back to the front rendering, it would increase the length of the house. Right now, the garage is sixteen feet wide with a single garage door. If we had put it on the other side and turned it, the length of that wall would be twenty-four feet. Without a garage door on it, it would be basically two windows and would look like an extension of living space. So we like the, the way that the garage on the left kind of balances the main part of the house and is symmetrical or balances the wing on the right-hand side. The driveway, the proposed driveway is out of the conservation setback. If we had done it from Bucks Creek, it would be in the setback. So that was another reason that we had decided to locate the driveway and the garage on the left side of the house. The neighbor to the east also prefers the garage on this side as it creates a quiet space on that side of the house with all the outdoor activity and interior living space on the right-hand side of the house. So we decided to concentrate on lowering the height of the proposed house and, and the driveway. And by strategically placing the second floor space within the various dormers and keeping the ridge three feet, nine inches below what is actually allowed, we feel that this house blends into the neighborhood and is not overwhelming of the remaining original one-story cottages. Those cottages of which this was originally have small bedrooms, ten by ten bedrooms. And which were great for when their kids were little, twenty-odd years ago. Now the kids have grown and the bedrooms, ten by ten, as you know, were quite small. The bedrooms we have on the second floor are modest. They're not extravagant in size, but they give them a little bit more elbow room to move around. So we hope you agree that this is a sympathetic response to making the cottage a year-round house for the Mastrobonos and is not detrimental to the neighborhood. Although there are other, yes, one-story houses, we think in time, most of those will transition probably into having second floors put on them as well, as you can see in most areas around this, this neighborhood.
Thank you, Karen. Jim?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Madam Chair and ZBA members, thanks for your time today. It would be okay, I'd like to take thirty seconds and just introduce myself and my wife, because we weren't at the last ZBA. We are the homeowners of fifty-three Marshview. My name is Jim Mastrobono, this is my wife Laura. We have deep roots in Chatham. Laura's father and grandfather hand-built a house over on Soundview in the Ridge Vale area in the fifties. Laura spent many summers at that cottage in the late sixties, seventies and eighties. I'm dating you a bit, I apologize. We have two aunts and two uncles who are retired residents of Chatham. And we have a cousin who lives here year-round with her two daughters. a cousin who lives here year-round with her two daughters. Laura and I met in the early 90s. We got married. We started a family. We spent nearly all our free time, summer vacation time, in Chatham and dreamed of one day owning a home of our own here. That dream came true in 2002, when we bought 53 Marshview. For 15 years, we rented the cottage during July and August to offset the cost of a second home. Over during the non-peak months, we enjoyed all the great things about Chatham and Cape Cod with our growing family and took time to make incremental improvements to the cottage. Our children are now young adults, but still come to Chatham whenever they can. They have many friends here and love to show Chatham off to their new friends. Laura and I are approaching retirement and have decided that we wish to retire year-round in Chatham. As mentioned, our current cottage no longer fits our needs. It's simply too small, not winterized, and not designed for year-round living. We considered selling Marshview and purchasing another home in Chatham, but we love our location, and we love our Harding's Beach Hills neighborhood, and we love our neighbors. We considered a renovation, but ultimately decided on a complete rebuild for cost-effectiveness and energy efficiency reasons. We hired Karen, we hired Bill, we hired Clark Engineering, engineering all local professionals' experience in Chatham building process. We spent nearly two years on the design and were pleased when we cleared Conservation Commission, and were understandably disappointed in the outcome of the last ZBA. However, we took the ZBA's comments to heart. We took their feedback in, and we ultimately came up with a new plan that's been partially presented so far today that we feel addresses these concerns, and we're excited to share that with you. So I would just ask, maybe, Sarah, if you don't mind, advancing that slide, just to go through a few things. You can advance through this. And I think we discussed that the three major changes we're making, certainly the finished grade, ridge height, top of foundation, all dropped. Removal of the rear dormer, as, as Karen and Bill explained. This will reduce the visual mass from the back of the house also, with the big portion of the dormer just gone. And from the northeast corner of the site on Marshview, you won't have that visual mass of that dormer off the garage. And again, removing this fairly sizable door covered entry portago, you know, this is a four-by-10-foot, by 10-foot-high roof entry structure. That's no longer there. We now have a flat front home, more traditional cave. One of the board members mentioned that the columns weren't traditional caves, so we removed that, which again reduces the visual mass. If you could go to the next slide. This is just the site plan with all the house height dimension changes incorporated. If you go to the next slide, Sarah, please. On the left side, you have what we proposed in May of 23rd at the last ZBA meeting and what's, we're proposing today. And you can see all the dimensions have, critical dimensions have dropped down. So we really feel this, this home will certainly be just slightly elevated from street level and visually just, just perfect on the lot. Next slide, please. Sarah? I want to note this also. This is the approved Conservation Commission mitigation plan. Was there a, was there a pointer here?
Yeah. There's a button.
There's a button somewhere.
It's going off.
You keep hitting it.
Yeah, so, so if you've been by the property, you notice we have a lot of vegetation here within the 200-foot, 100-foot coastal bank area. And that all has to remain as per the Conservation Commission mitigation plan. There's also space down here that has to remain. We love this space, a lot of great birds, you know, a lot of great wildlife. We have to augment, we're going to remove this driveway. We hope to remove this driveway. And we, and if we do so, we have to augment this area with some additional native plantings, a tree here, some different bushes, the plant schedule's right here. So this has been approved by the Conservation Commission, but, but what the net result will be, will be, you know, a visual buffer really from this point all the way around the house, almost to the dri, the new driveway. This area right now is got, you know, spruce in it, a couple of oaks, 10-foot thicket. So you, when you're biking or walking around here, you can, you can't see our cottage at all. So we think that's, we think that's a benefit to the site. Sarah, could you go to the next slide, please? So this is our proposed house. We've seen this already. Could you go to the next slide, please, Sarah? This is quickly Harding's Beach Hill neighborhood. I just want to say a couple of words on this. This is a neighborhood in every true sense of the word neighborhood. It was developed around the same time. It's a neighborhood association comprised of 84 homes. There are two entrances to the home here on Marshview and here on Hilltop. You're greeted with that sign at both entrances. We all have shared rights to a common picnic area and dock area where we keep our kayaks and canoes, and we have our annual meeting here. Everyone pays the same annual HOA fee. Next slide, please. This has evolved, this neighborhood. Here's our house at 53, to the point where almost half of the homes are greater than one story. Next slide, please. They've grown, people have expanded. These homes, a third of them are greater than 2,000 square feet, as reflected in those highlighted in yellow. Next slide, please. This is what Bill was mentioning. This is our house. If you just focus on this, this area around, so these are, these are homes that are within eyesight of our home. This is what they look like. So, you know, you have four on Marshview, 20, 38, 58, and 82, and one right, direct about, or right behind us on Pine Ridge. So sizable two-story homes in a reasonable proximity to us. Next slide, please. These are the five most recent homes built in Harding's Beach Hill. We showed this, I think Bill, you were mentioning this one. This very much looks like our design, which is, which I have here. This was just completed at the end of 2023. The Reagans moved in in, I think, 2024. This is a short 260-yard walk from my house. Here's another one that was completed in 2002. This is a Karen Kempton design. It's a larger home. This is the only lot, by the way, on here that's non-conforming, so it's a bigger house. But you can see the style. This is right next to the dock area. Here's a house that was completed in 2017, very close, 190-yard walk from me, right, right up Pine Ridge, 2,800-square-foot home. This house is another Karen, actually, this is a Karen-designed house, and this is a Karen-designed house. She's very popular in Harding's Beach Hill. So this house is on the opposing corner to us. So on the corner of Bucks Creek and Marshview is our lot. On the corner of Bucks Creek and Hilltop, the other entrance is this house, which was completed in 2016 at 69 Bucks Creek. It has a pool back there. It has a two-car garage, similar square footage to what we're building, a corner lot, nearly the same size. This is a house that's, you know, a pitching wedge away from me, 160 yards right down the road, built in 2012. So I think, I think our home in relation to the five most recently built homes in our neighborhood, it's not an outlier in terms of size, it's not an outlier in terms of style. Next slide, please, Sarah. And just, you can just go through. These are just other examples of rebuilt and renovated homes in the Harding Beach Hills neighborhood that just shows the variation in some sizable houses in our, in our neighborhood association, you know? You see a couple Palermo's designs here. This house is actually almost 15 feet above street level, sizable home. Next slide, please. Just four more examples of houses and varying designs. Next slide, please. This is a big renovation that was completed in 2022 on Indian Trail. Here you see a colonial. Here you see a contemporary. Again, just further examples of more varying designs in the neighborhood. Next slide. This is, this is my final slide. I just want to make just some summary comments. You know, we believe that substantial changes were made to the house design and site plan to address the points that were raised by the May 23rd ZBA meeting. We took them to heart. We made substantive changes to the site and to the house. Another point here is that street views of the house will be visually buffered by the native vegetation that's required by the mitigation plan of the Conservation Commission that we need to manage. The house is a modest house for year-round living. The first floor only has a kitchen, a dining, and a living room. The second floor has three modest bedrooms and a smaller office. It's a single-car garage home. The proposed house design and project plans have been shared frequently with our neighbors throughout the whole process. We've been incredibly, incredibly transparent with them, and we've received positive feedback. Our neighbors value home improvement. They really do. And they value year-round residents for personal and property safety reasons. And I think you'll hear from some of the neighbors when you read the letters. And finally, the proposed houses, shown by the pictures in this presentation, are compatible with other properties in our neighborhood and consistent in terms of size and scale with recently built and remodeled homes. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I can run through the criteria if you want.
Not necessary, because you did it last time.
Thank you.
And we can read your mind. Scary thought, but we can. All right, so, thank you for your presentation and your passion and the completeness of it. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Maybe one? Nope. I have five correspondences to read. Let's see. First one was received on July 30th, and it is from David Whitcomb. "Madam Chair, I hoped to attend your meeting today, but I'm unable to do so. Would you please read the following letter into the record? In 1933, my maternal grandparents, Frederick and Helen Driscoll, bought a farmhouse on 40 acres of land in West Chatham. In 1957, they sold the property to Donald Smith, who subdivided the land into 90 house lots of approximately 12,500 square feet. He then began the building one-story, three-bedroom cottages, all of basically the same design. Mr. Smith named the first summer subdivision Harding Beach Hills. In 1960, he noted, he donated the land to be used as a common area to promote neighborhood interaction in the HBH. The Bucks Creek Yacht Club was founded 64 years later. That continues to be the governing body of our neighborhood. We print a yearly directory with the names, addresses, and contact information of our neighbors. The book also includes the current offices of the Board of Directors, as well as our community bylaws and regulations. We have two bank accounts. All members pay the same dues. The entirety of the B-Y, B-C-Y-H is a true neighborhood and should be regulated accordingly. The few homes abutting the property at issue are not a neighborhood in and of themselves and do not represent the average size of homes throughout the HBH. Most of the original cottages have been substantially altered or replaced since they were built. Much larger homes have been constructed on previously undeveloped lots. Jim and Laura Mastobono have summered at 53 Marshview for 22 years. They've raised their family and have been wonderful neighbors. They would like to retire and have designed a house to meet their future needs. The proposed dwelling complies with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the Chatham bylaws. The Chatham Health Agent has no concerns, and the Conservation Commission has signed off on the project. The neighbors are supportive. Less than 10% of the neighborhood is, are year-rounders, and it would be nice to see another light in the off-season." Finally, the Mastobonos have addressed the concerns of three ZBA members by reducing the size mass of the proposed new home. I believe the special permit will substantially benefit our neighborhood, and I encourage the ZBA to approve the application. Thank you for your consideration, David R. Whitcomb. Next, we have a letter from Marvin and Cindy Dollinger of 14 Pine Ridge Road in Chatham. I am a year, this was received on July 28th of this year. "I am a year-round neighbor of 53 Marshville, Marshview. I have seen the renderings. I believe it will be a substantial improvement to the site. I'm confident it meets or exceeds all the requirements of the neighborhood and look forward to its completion." Next, we have a letter from Russell and Nancy Young, 24 Pine Ridge Road, West Chatham. And that is received on July 27th, 2024. "We are abutting neighbors of 53 Marshville Road in Harding Beach Hills Development and are writing to offer support for their building project. We have reviewed the plans and computer rendering of the home they plan to build and believe it will be a substantial improvement to the site, complement the neighborhood. There have been many recent renovation projects in the neighborhood, and this project appears compatible in design and size." Next, we have a note from Joe and Courtney Peters of 13 Bucks Creek Road, received on July 26th. "We are in a abutter to 53 Marshfield, Marshview Road and would like to offer our support of Laura and Jim's proposal before the Chatham Zoning Board. Nothing about this project, including its original form, has struck us as interfering with our rights as abutters. Having reviewed the most recent renderings, it seems respectful of the modesty and charm of the Harding Beach Hills neighborhood while incorporating present-day updates and sensibilities. Collectively, it would seem that these features will enhance not just the aesthetics and comfort of the property, but also its health, safety, and overall quality. Undoubtedly, over the long term, the entire neighborhood and community at large gains from such investments and improvements by the owners." We have a short note from Kevin Brownly of 48 Marshview Road, received on July 25th. He lives across the street from Laura and Jim Mastobono at 53 Marshview Road. He shared, he lives actually at 48. "He shared the plans and renderings with me of the house and that they wish to build. I believe it will be an improvement to the site on Harding Beach Hills neighborhood, and I do not see it out of scale or scope with the houses in the neighborhood." And that concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, I have one comment I'd like to make regarding the correspondence.
Oh, sure. Please.
The last letter you wrote, read from Kevin Brownly. He owns the house that Mr. Nixon was referring to in our last meeting.
Right.
Where he was very concerned that this house was going to be a detriment to that house, that our proposed house would be a detriment. Clearly, Mr. Brownly doesn't think so. I just wanted to...
No, and he's the man that lives there now.
Yes.
Not necessarily the man that's going to live there forever.
No, his grandfather's still alive, so we think he's going to live for a long time.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say about that? Good. All right. Questions from the board? Let's see. Where do we begin? Lee, we'll begin with Lee. Just questions.
Yeah.
Just questions.
You know, you could always express your concerns as well, because it's a lot easier for us to address them if you tell us during this period.
Well, we're going to follow along with our rules during this process and all processes. But thank you for your, your comment. Go ahead, Lee.
Actually, I have no questions.
Okay. Steve, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I have a couple, Mr. Riley, maybe Karen. I want to make sure I understood what you said. So you reduced the height of the home two inches from the last hearing. Is that right?
No.
No, the height of the house.
We lowered, we lowered the structure by an additional foot, so that the previous design, the top of foundation was one foot lower than the existing top of foundation. And so what we did after the last hearing was reduce the height of the top of foundation by another foot.
Which reduced it another two inches? Two feet?
Two feet.
Well, I'm looking at the cover page, and it has proposed height 266 was what was...
The grade plane? Is that what you're referring to? The grade plane changed by two inches.
Yes, that's what I'm referring to. Well, it's referred to as proposed height of the, of the home.
The height of the home has not changed. It's always been 25 feet above the top of foundation. We're just dropping the whole house down, two feet lower than the existing house, one foot lower than our previous proposal.
One foot lower. Okay. I mean, it's confusing a little, Sarah, on this sheet, and I'm not reading it right. It's...
What sheet is that?
So, Bill, when...
We're going to, Karen's going to explain.
Our cover page. The board asked for building height, which is provided by the engineer/land surveyor. And if you look at the proposed ridge height from average grade, which is how the town of Chatham measures building height, it's showing it's reduced by two inches. From 266...
Because the average grade changed.
Right. From 266 to 266. Right, from 26.6 to 26.4.
Right, the average grade has changed, so it's actually a foot lower.
Okay.
It is deceiving, you know, numbers can be confusing.
Under our bylaw, average grade is calculated from final grade, not existing grade. So when you lower the grade, if the house height remains the same, then the proposed ridge height is going to remain constant.
No, I understand that, Mr. Riley, but when we look at the site plans, the previous home was listed as 26 feet, six inches, and this one now is 26.4.
I'm going to just stop you just for one second to help. We're going to ask a building commissioner to chime in.
So the ridge elevation dropped a foot, but the grade plane also dropped. So the net effect is a two-inch, a building height of two inches less on this application.
Okay. But visually, it's more than two inches. It's over a foot visually.
No, it's only two inches difference. Building height is different, because we measure from the average grade.
But I mean.
They lowered the.
They lowered the grade.
They lowered the grade.
Right, okay. So visually, it's, okay, I wanted to clarify that. My next question, you already answered, which was that the grade changed a foot from the last time. Okay. Karen, you mentioned the garage on the west, or the garage siding on the west side was contemplated, but it required more square feet that you didn't have.
Well, if we did it on the west side, it would be access from Bucks Creek.
Bucks Creek, right.
And it would still be a single-car garage with one door.
Yeah.
However, if you, a garage has to be 22, 24 feet deep, okay?
Okay.
So if we're turning it on the other side, instead of having the 16-foot-wide door, now we have a 22, 24-foot-deep garage facing Marshview, which doesn't now look like a garage, it looks like a continuation of the house. So we like that the garage door does face Marshview, it keeps it compact, it keeps it charming.
So the depth can go in the back, the depth goes back.
The depth goes left to right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I guess my last question would be, and I'll get into this a little bit more during deliberations, Mr. Riley, but the pictures, the images that you shared with us were very helpful. Some of the ones that you spoke of specifically, that you said, "This is just like practically our home." I think the homeowner said that, I think you said that, a couple of the houses look very similar. But one of the things I noticed is that they have, their dormers are not as, one of the issues that I'm having a little bit with the home is that it's a little top-heavy. You have 13 windows going across the top, if you add all of them. And some of these other homes really, like see the one on the top left, see how that's four windows? It's two dormers, it's a Nantucket dormer, they're large doghouse dormers. But the windows of it, and a couple of these other ones, the one on the bottom corner, same thing, does not have a Nantucket dormer, but it has two doghouse, two windows. So I guess my question would be, and you don't have to answer it right now, but maybe think about it as we proceed through the hearing, would you be open to reducing a little bit of that? I think it could help with the mass.
The dormers on the right and left, over the garage and over the wing on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Help us have headroom on the second floor. If we didn't have those dormers there, we wouldn't have sufficient headroom for the bedrooms upstairs. So that's why we made them as minimal as we could by bringing them in from the corners. The house on the upper right-hand side is actually 40 feet across, instead of our 28 feet across. So it's a much larger house, able to get more second-floor space in there.
On the upper right.
Upper right.
Yeah. No, I was talking, I'm sorry, I was talking about the upper left.
Yeah, the upper left, but as you can see from this, there's no second-floor space on the right and the left wing. It's only in the center part of the house. And because we're trying to keep the footprint of the house small, we have to put all the bedrooms on the second floor versus having a bedroom on the first floor, making the footprint even larger than what it is. So squeezing in the three bedrooms upstairs plus an office is why we need the dormers on the two ends. And I think the look of it balances the house as well.
I don't disagree that it looks nice, it's just that if you count, it's 13 windows going across the top and really like five windows below. I think it contributes to some top heaviness, that was my only point. And I mentioned, we're getting a little bit into deliberations, but the question as part of it would be, would you consider that? So.
We could possibly remove.
Reducing the number of windows?
Yeah, that's a question. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
And Dave Nixon, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, Karen, I briefly spoke with you before about the garage on the left. It kind of makes, to me, that whole section jump right out at me. And reviewing what troubles me, maybe it's that big white thing, you know, that that might be my real issue. As a, you know.
What, the door?
The garage door.
Yeah, the garage door. As opposed to moving it to the right, I understand the reasons why you don't want to or you can't and so forth. But how would you mitigate that door? Would you somehow finish it in the same way you finished the house? Would that somehow soften it?
Well, we haven't talked about paint colors yet.
Right.
We generally like white because it's traditional, and that's what you see everywhere.
I understand, but.
That wall is four feet back from the front wall of the house. I don't know if the rendering actually shows the depth of that, but it is set back quite a bit.
Yeah, the side view shows that, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe by changing the color of the door to a light gray, if Jim and Laura would go with that. But again, we like the balance of the right-hand side, the V groove board and the white door of the garage door. If we had done shingles underneath the porch, as you know, shingles don't weather the same. If they're not in the sun, they don't weather the same as the rest of the house. So that's why we chose to do the white V groove board on the right-hand side, which I think, again, balances the white door, the garage door on the left.
But the sharpness of it could be mitigated, even with paint or weather it might be, okay. And I think, I think that was my major concern about that. So, Mr. Riley, the applicant made a case for the entire neighborhood being Harding's Beach Hills and all that. Talk to us about standing. I don't mean standing here, but legally standing. And I know you know a lot about this, because for those who don't know, Mr. Riley was the architect of a very famous decision, which was Kenner versus his clients by the name of the Doctors Hybe. And what had happened, this was on Chatham Bar, Chatham.
Chatham Harbor.
Chatham Harbor Lane, thank you. Where his client wanted to rebuild a cottage right on the water, and it went up seven feet, and this board approved it. And the folks that lived behind it, and the house went up like this, it wasn't on the same plane, they sued against us. And after, I don't know how many years it went on, but one thing led to another and whatnot. And a lot of the talk in that case had to do with standing and whatnot. But eventually, Mr. Riley was justified. And so winning the case for his clients, he won it for the zoning board of appeals. And thank you very much, you know, I don't think he got paid a dime from the town for it, but that's okay, we appreciate it. Anyway, so would you give us like a tutorial about standing within a neighborhood? And to me, the neighborhood is just the houses you can see, that doesn't agree with your applicant. But seems to me there was a lot of talk about that, and maybe you're the one to give us a little education.
I think the, well, the interest of the public in zoning matters really has got two levels. You've got a hearing like this where you're advertising in the newspaper, and Joe Blow from Howard can come in and tell you what he thinks about the design. But when a matter is appealed to a court, whether it's the Superior Court or the Land Court, standing requires an aggrievement, an injury that you suffer that the public doesn't suffer. And so in the Kenner case, they said that the change in height of the building impacted their view of Nantucket Sound. And the, so two things sort of came out of that case. One is, yes, this is funny, I've never won a case in the appeals court, but I have one in the SJC on appeal from the appeals court. And the, so what the SJC said in that case was, in terms of, we have neighborhood views and vistas. Well, it's neighborhood views and vistas, it's not individual views. So the Kenners were complaining specifically about the impact on their view. And the court said, "Well, the bylaw is not designed to protect an individual view. It's only designed to protect neighborhood views." But they did go on to say that the Kenner House, so the first floor of the Kenner House was higher than the ridge line of the Hybe proposed house. So we're talking about a world-class wine here, because they were so much higher. And so they said, "Yeah, but because the impact is so de minimis, there's no injury, perceived injury." And so they didn't have standing for two reasons. One, there was no injury, and two, the bylaw's not designed to protect single views. But so you have to have, you have to be close enough in proximity to the house so that the construction, well, not the house, or whatever the project is, so that the construction of that project is going to create, relative to you, some significant injury, legal injury, legally recognizable injury or aggrievement. And so, so that's why, while all the neighbors in Harding's Beach Hills can comment, the only ones who actually have standing in an appeal would really be sort of the immediate abutters to the property. Is that?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, Mr. Nixon?
None from Mr. Riley.
All right.
No questions.
And I have no questions.
I think I have a couple of questions. So on one of your, in this, let's see, I don't know what page it's on, but I'll just tell you that you say 39 of 84 homes in what you call the neighborhood, 46% of them are greater than one story. So here's my question. When you say greater than one story, you're also including one and a half, 1.75, 1.75, right? You can just see it's a yes or no on that?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't mean necessarily two-story?
No, that's why I framed it as greater than one story.
Greater than one story.
Because that's what's in the web assessors.
And so that's 46% are greater than one story, but that means most are not, correct?
The majority are not just by that.
Yeah, I just, you know, just want to just clarify.
That's a true statement.
Okay, very good, very good. And then, and all these, a lot of these other houses that you're saying, you know, are larger, they're on larger lots, correct?
No, actually, that's not the case.
Well, not all of them.
Not all of them.
No, but a lot of them are on larger lots.
Some of them are.
I noted the one where I had the recent bills, I did note the one house, Karen designed the house, that was on a conforming lot. It was just over 20,000 square foot. But the rest of those houses were all on non-conforming lots under between like 13,000 and 15,000 square feet, so.
Okay, okay. And then another one of your math equations says 27 of 84, which is 32%, are larger than 2,000 square feet, right? So they're not larger than three, and your house is actually in the fours. So what is the point?
No, no, this is that square footage from the web assessors.
So he's just talking about living area in that comparison.
So 32%, which is about a third, are larger than 2,000.
Yep.
Okay? And yours is much larger than 2,000, and it's still in a.
26.84.
Say again?
26.84, I believe, our house.
Is the living area.
Is the living area. I'm comparing the metric I'm using.
Okay, no, okay, so we can use 26, okay? So a third of them are la, wait a minute, let's see. 32% of the homes in the area are larger than 2,000. So that's only a third of them are larger than 2,000. So most of them are not.
That's correct.
Actually, the huge proportion of them are not. So, okay, I'm just, you know, I'm just giving, you know, giving back what you gave us, just to clarify.
Yeah, I think you're interpreting the statistics there correctly, yep.
Okay, no, very good, very good. Okay, so we already read the correspondence, we're on questions, I was the last one to ask questions. Paul.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David seconds and votes yes.
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 As do I. All right, deliberations. Paul.
Well, I think perhaps other than the lawyers on this board, we all went snoozing on standing there as Mr. Riley got into the Kenner case and injury or no injury. But I really think. Sorry. I really think that we're getting a little bit too caught up in the weeds there, and we should look at the broader picture. And the broader picture, I think, is represented by the comment that was made by Dave Whitcomb in his historical analysis of the properties out there and the neighborhood and how this fits in. And I think the neighborhood is in fact the whole Harding's Beach Hills area, whether you're talking about the question of standing or not standing. I think the standing issue may be a little bit different than what we're actually using for our overall view. And I think that this house fits in. I was in favor of it before. I think they've made some modifications to try and address the board's concerns, and I think they've done a good job in trying to do that. I do not think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I will support it.
And David, you were also supportive before?
Yeah, I was in support of it before, and I feel very much the same way that Paul has expressed. I think that, I, you know, I just don't, I think they've responded to concerns in a reasonable way. You know, I mean, they're seeking to, I mean, they certainly know the inadequacies of their current home. They've lived in it for quite a while. And I think that they've shown a willingness to cut back on the design that was presented the last time in a way that I, to me, that indicates that they're, you know, they're serious about this and they like it, and this is what they'd like to have. And I don't, and there's no way, I don't see this as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I really don't. I think, you know, even, it is true, you know, kind of looking at the immediate abutters, you see more of the ranch, you know, the ranches, but there are more than one-story buildings close by as they've indicated. And as you go a little further out into Harding's Beach Hills, you see quite a few more. I, when this is, assuming that this can get our approval, and they lowered it another foot, when this is completed, this part is completed, in no way would this stand out in a way that any of us or any of the neighbors would look back and say, "Oh, what happened here?" It's just not, it's not the case here at all. This is a fitting and nice design, and I'll support it.
Ed, your thoughts?
So I went out to, I was out there yesterday, and I noticed, you know, all of the renters in the neighborhood. And honestly, it reminded me of my wife's family home in Harwich. And it was originally a small, little ranch, not insulated. It was their parents, there was grandparents, I think her parents bought it for $30,000 from them. We put a second floor on it, somehow the son-in-law got roped into putting. Somehow the son-in-law got roped into putting a second floor on it, adding a garage, and, and, and doing something very similar to this on a, on a similar-sized lot. And now it's just Cheryl's parents, they're in their eighties there, but it allowed, you know, the rest of the family to be there for a time. And I, I think this is sort of, you know, the evolution of, of, of this type of neighborhood. And I would be totally supportive of it. I'm not voting, but I think it'll fit in. And I think this is sort of the, the natural progression of, of perhaps these neighborhoods.
All right, Lee?
I, I agree with all of my colleagues. I'm not voting today either. But once again, very attractive home. We appreciate you taking into consideration some of our thoughts. And I'm not, as I said, not voting, but I would support it.
And Steve?
Well, first I want to thank you for taking some of the comments that we made at the earlier hearing into consideration. I think it's to everyone's benefit. I think it's sort of quelled some of the concerns that some of the board members had at the time. And I appreciate you doing that. The other thing that, and that I just, and it sort of leans toward what Jenny was talking about, was that the dormers on the top, on the second floor, there appears to be three different-sized dormers and at least three different-sized windows. So, you know, maybe, maybe in those doghouse dormers, instead of having a mullion, have just single windows. I don't know, there's, there's some, there's, the, the second floor just looks very busy. So if you could maybe do something to, to make the, those Nantucket dormers a bit more consistent in size and in height, and the, the windows more consistent. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote against this because of that, but I just think it would look a little bit better. That's it.
Do you want me to respond to that?
You can, sure.
I think what we'd like is the interplay of the different heights and the different-sized windows so it doesn't look all monochromatic, you know, as one height across the front of the house. It breaks it down into separate little scales and separate little units, which we think is interesting and does minimize the scale of the house.
But the Metro Bonos are happy to look at it and discuss it with Karen.
All right, Dave Nixon, deliberations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, first of all, I want to speak about the idea of what's a neighborhood. And I don't agree with Mr. Whitcomb's letter nor what Mr. Riley's client feels is the neighborhood. And I say that, not only with what you informed us as far as legal standing, it has to be one of the houses that can actually see it. And I've always felt that way. When I walk around a property, what can I see? Who can see this? And when you look at our special permit criteria, a lot of it is visual.
Right.
And at, at the end of the day, then we have to make a decision based on that. So in looking into the rules and regulations for the zoning board of appeals, we are obligated to notify any butter that is within three hundred feet. That's a hundred yards. That's all that is. That's a sure thing. And we, Sarah goes to the assessors' board, and she gets a list and they make a nice little circle for her and all that kind of stuff. And it makes it easy for her to notify. So we notify them. Okay, so, so what? Well, so what to me is that that's the extent of a neighborhood. That's the, you know, we have a lot of things here, like, let's talk about percentages of building on a lot. The fifteen percent or whatever it might be. Well, that doesn't say to you, go ahead and make it fifteen percent. What it's saying to you is that's the max you can do. And that's what this three hundred says to me. That's the max that I could consider what a neighborhood would be. But I still go back to what I think it is. So I appreciate what you said about the homes nearby. Because frankly, I didn't realize that the first time.
Well, that was my fault for not...
Well, no, and, and so thank you for bringing that up. So having said that, I, I just don't want people to think, well, okay, I agree with that, the idea of a neighborhood. I don't want the folks in River Bay coming in and saying, we're one big happy neighborhood. All three hundred and fifty homes. And Mr. Litchfield would represent every single one of them. And good for him, anyway.
By the way, there, by the way, there are four hundred lots in River Bay.
Oh, so we got fifty more to go? Okay, great. Thank you for telling us. We, we can expect that. Anyway, never mind that. Let's go on to the specifics. And the specifics are, is this, what you last presented to us, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And I believe with the changes that Karen's made with her clients and you, that I no longer feel it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I applaud the changes you made and what you wish to do. And I will be voting for it.
And Jenny?
Thank you. I, I was one of the ones at the last hearing that was, had concerns about streetscape and the neighborhood visual character. And, well, actually, well, let me first start off by acknowledging the very helpful packet that you put together. It was evidence of a lot of work and it was actually very helpful, so thank you. And I do also want to acknowledge the changes that you made since our last hearing. Now, because I was one of the ones that was not in favor of it last time, I, I really spent a lot of time on the new proposal. I got an advanced copy of this and I pored over it. So I have some things, and, and so forgive me if I'm referencing a lot of my notes here, but I want to make sure I cover these things. I, I think that the narrative and what Mr. Whitcomb wrote was very helpful because when I first drove through the property for the last hearing that we had, I had the immediate distinct feeling that this was a cottage community. It just felt that way. And it felt quaint, it felt charming, and it, it felt primarily like a community of cottages. And your paperwork has confirmed that. Randy brought that up. The fact that forty-six percent of homes are greater than one story means that fifty-four percent of them are one-story. So I, I wanted to just confirm that that, that this rendering really did confirm that. Eighty-four homes in total in the, in the total association, which we're not necessarily saying is the neighborhood, but association. The other thing that's interesting about the eighty-four-home property association is that there's very much, there's undulating hills and, you know, the roads. There's Marshview, there's Waterview. And there's very much diversity of architecture there. And so when we talked about the neighborhood last time, I think we were primarily focusing on this, this front part.
Right.
Half of it, not the water side, primarily this part. Because we did drive around. We didn't just look at five homes and, and leave. And many of us have been back several times. I, I go into that detail because I just want you to have an understanding of what, what we were coming from last time. Your paperwork also confirms that the majority of the, well, let's zoom in on that northeast half of the association. You're fifty-three. If Sarah, maybe you want to pull that, this, if you could, pull this up. All right, so you're fifty-three, you're the star. And, you know, it's predominantly one-story. And specifically, based on your packet of information, so in, in that particular part of it, it's almost seventy percent of that half of the association was one-story. That's, that's just another reason why we were saying. The other thing is, and I appreciate the effort made to reduce the grade, to reduce the height, that was something I specifically was brought up last time. One of the things, I talked about the undulating kind of, fifty-three is sort of at the top of this hill. Right, right after it is a, is a drop-off where, so that's another reason why we made the comment, house on the hill. I, I just want to give that some, some context. And again, your paperwork supports that. And so that's why I believe I said, and I think, you know, maybe some of the others that said that, why we thought the original proposal was a detriment to the visual character of the neighborhood. I also want to say that going back to this cottage community, maybe not everyone wants a big, to, to improve their home and make it be a bigger home. And so maybe some of the people that bought in this cottage community many years ago bought it and want it to stay closer to a cottage community. So it's half and half now. Is one more house going to change it? Is ten more houses going to change it? Who knows? We need to be open to what the community wants. And, and as Mr. Acton pointed out, maybe folks, you know, they want to evolve their homes, but maybe some don't. So I don't think that we can say that by, by, and this is why it's been important to me to make sure I was comfortable with what you were proposing because I, I do want to look out for the folks that maybe want this to remain more of a cottage community feel. But not at the detriment of denying someone who wants to improve. And, and that's my last point here is, having said all of that, no one said that you couldn't and shouldn't expand your, your home and build a two-story home. No, no one said that. It's great that you're meeting all the setbacks and all the requirements. But you are here primarily because of your lot size. At the end of the day, you have twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. You are thirty-five percent under what you need to be conforming, and that's why you're here. And that's why massing was our number-one concern last time, or I'll say mine. However, we want to work with you. These pictures that you've, you've shown us were very helpful. I, I put a, a star around sixty-five Pine Ridge, around sixty-nine Bucks Creek, and and also around ninety-three Bucks Creek, just for the example of the dormers. Because I do feel as though the house is a little heavy. I, I would use that word to describe it. I, I do think that your, your new pictures show the recession on the left and the right a little bit more, you know, the, you know, the step-back than, than maybe it did before. I, I would ask you to consider maybe just reducing a little bit of the, of the, the dormer windows. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't deny the property because, because of that. I, I, I just want to give you that background and say I appreciate everything that you've done. I, I can agree to support this, this project because of the changes that you made, your willingness to listen to us. But I, and thank you for letting me explain where we were coming from and why it was such a tough decision.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, so I still think it's too big for the lot, but I did not say that I think it's substantially detrimental. I think it's detrimental. But the reasons why I'd vote in favor is because it's not a heavily-traveled street. I don't think it's going to really ding the charm of, of the town of Chatham. You're not increasing any non-conformities. You're not getting closer to the coastal bank. You're not getting closer to neighbors. You're not getting closer to the street. Those are the things that often really wear me down. You're not tearing down a historic house and replacing it with some house that has a style that's repugnant to Cape Cod. You're not doing that. The windows, I still think are awkward, but beauty is in the eye of the beholder. The letters mean very little to me because it's not part of our criteria. And you should want us to follow our criteria because you should want us to be fair. And so you could have four thousand letters, and if we're not following the criteria, it's really, you know, it's kind of a kangaroo court here. So if we're following the criteria and because I don't think it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood as the criteria forces us to, to judge, I will vote in favor. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think the conditions that we normally would impose would make sense in this neighborhood. So I would add that all, all construction activity and vehicles should be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends. And construction activity would be between eight AM and five PM only.
David seconds and votes affirmative.
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We will now take a five-minute break and we will resume at about quarter of five. five. Whatever Sarah's ready. Application 24-050.
Application number 24-050. Barcliff Properties LLC, care of Rick Howard, 405 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Owner of property located at 172 Barcliff Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's Map 15G Block 23 Lot K1. The applicant seeks to in large extent interchange a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing detached garage, installation of a new foundation, and construction of additions. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 19.4 feet from Barcliff Avenue and 24.1 foot feet from Mousehole Lane. The existing garage is nonconforming, and it is located 31.4 feet from Mousehole Lane. The proposed addition will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 23.8 feet from Mousehole Lane, where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,050 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,469 square feet, where 3,000 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 27,354 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw. This was continued from May 30, 2024.
Mr. Norcross, Attorney Norcross, welcome. Do you want to tell us what's changed on this one?
Sure. I can tell you what's changed, and there's a little bit more I'd like to get into as well.
Yeah, of course.
But Jamie Norcross, representing Marty McDonald. Mr. McDonald is here with me today in the back in the blue. Next to him is his builder, Todd Murphy, who presented at the last hearing for the project over the winter. So again, before I just dive into the changes, I did want to touch on a few items I know came up during the hearing. I think there were during the the winter hearing. I didn't represent Marty at that time, but I have viewed the the meeting in terms of there were some, I guess I call them ancillary concerns from the board, reasonable concerns, not necessarily related to the project itself. But I would like to just address how those have been or how those items have been addressed since that hearing, since the board did have some concerns about those.
Okay.
So the first was there were a number of older building permits that were found at the records of the Building Department, and Todd, working with the Building Department, has cleaned that up. So any any building permits are only for active work at the property, which would be the renovating the existing front section of the building would be the only active permit. A second concern was the pool. The temporary fencing has been placed around the pool after that hearing, and Todd reviewed that with the Building Department, who felt that it addressed the safety concerns. So that piece was addressed as well. And again, I know they weren't directly related to the application that you before you at that hearing, but there were concerns that were brought up by the board. I did want to ensure you that Marty had addressed those. So in terms of changes, Sarah, if you want to pull up the site plan for me first. You can do this one, fine, the most recent site plan. So the addition, the the hatched area is existing house. The addition encompasses the sunroom on sonotubes portion that you see at the bottom, as well as, we'll call it, the connector piece going to what would be the attached garage. The connector and the garage have been moved back, I believe, about five feet from the prior application so that the garage, the proposed garage, is in line with the setback of the existing garage. So there's no further encroachment into Mousehole Lane from the proposed garage. And then, Sarah, if you could please pull up the front elevation.
Stick or rendering?
Either's fine. Oh, I'm sorry, the Mousehole renovation. So another change here is the the ridge height of the roof on the connector piece, so going from the on the back of the existing house to the garage, that was lowered by about a foot and a half from the from the prior plan to try and, again, address some of the massing concerns. So those are the, again, the extent of the changes. But I think, if I may, Madam Chair, there was, I think, some information that was not provided at the last hearing that I think would be helpful for the board in addressing their consideration today. So if I may go through some of those numbers and information with you, I think it might be helpful.
You didn't represent them May 23rd, no?
We continued May 23rd. We never had a hearing.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the hearing was back in the wintertime, and I did not represent them at that time.
Okay, go ahead.
So just a bit of background, the Marty has owned this property since 2008. He's owned, prior to that, he owned a property in South Chatham going back to 1999. So Marty's been a property owner in Chatham for over 25 years. The existing house is small, especially for modern living. Marty has seven siblings and 26 nieces and nephews, which makes any family gathering at the existing house quite a challenge. Marty's goal with this project was to maintain as much of the existing historical structure as possible. And so in working with his architect, they decided to add on to the rear of the existing home while keeping the front structure as viewed from Mousehole and adding to the back. The historical integrity of the existing structure was important to Marty. The Historical Commission reviewed that. They were very much in favor of this project. They deemed it to be historically significant, but found that the changes did not take away from the historical significance. And in terms of the addition, again, it's a substantial addition, but the existing house does not have a lot of room. And in terms of where you're going to add space, you really have to go back. It's a it's a long and narrow lot. There's not a lot of room on the sides. So to add area, they decided to add to the back, which, again, helps them maintain the existing historical structure without doing a full demo rebuild, which would have perhaps provided some additional options. Sort of adding on to the back of the structure is really the classic way these old homes were were expanded over the years. And again, this is a large expansion, but it's in keeping, I think, with that design The setback from Mousehole Lane, I know, was a concern at the last hearing. There's a 40-foot setback to Mousehole, as indicated on the site plan. We don't meet that, but we are setback over 31 feet from Mousehole Lane. So it's a substantial setback. It's in line with the existing garage. Again, our structure is going to be larger, but it's it's it is setback over 31 feet. I'd also note, as you see on here, the connector piece is pulled back even further. And so that helps on a couple of fronts. First, and Sarah, if you could pull up the rendering from Mousehole, please. That helps on a couple of fronts. Again, that, by having different distances to Mousehole Lane, it helps break up the massing from the visual as you look at it. It's also pushing some of the building even further back from Mousehole Lane than the 31 feet that the garage is setback. As you can see here, that middle section, again, is pushed further back to try and reduce the impact of the additional mass from this addition. A concern and a topic at the hearing back in the wintertime was gross floor area numbers for this structure. And it's going to be 6,100 square feet gross floor area. It's a big jump from what's there now. There's no doubt about it. I would note that 1,700 square feet of that is in the basement. And in reviewing the the meeting, I think Mr. Veach mentioned that it's a large number, but it's not out of, it's not disproportionate with some of the other properties in the area. And so in going through my gross floor area analysis, you know, we're not on an island in terms of that size for this neighborhood. There are a number of homes that are in the high fives, low sixes for gross floor area. And so the in the packet that I handed out to you today, which is a little bit different than this one, I did a couple of things. First was to figure out the average for the lots that I've listed here. What's the average lot size? What's the average gross floor area? And then what's the percentage of gross floor area at the overall lot size? And so what that revealed, again, it's a little bit of an imperfect science, but is that the average lot size for the neighborhood is a little bit over 24,000 square feet. We have 27,000 square feet. Gross floor area, the average is 4,100 feet. We're significantly larger than that. However, I think the important number to look at is when you do the average percentage of gross floor area to lot size, the average for the neighborhood is 22.63%, and we're right at 22.51%. So I think that shows that from a size impact, we're in keeping with the neighborhood. You like to look at, I believe, gross floor area because it provides you with an idea of how big a structure is relative to the overall neighborhood and other structures in the neighborhood. And I think just sort of adding on to that to show, wow, this is the size of the structure. This is the size of the property. What's the percentage? I think further helps you review the size of the what we're proposing relative to neighboring The Sarah, if you could please pull up the the Google Earth link. So just, I thought this was a bit helpful in terms of, again, some of the discussion at the the hearing during the wintertime was the length of the house. And it is going to be a long house, given how the addition works with the long and narrow lot. But you can see how long this lot is. It's over, I believe, 250 feet in length. And so it's a big, long, and deep lot. And so the house is going to go as far as that existing garage. So in terms of taking up an overwhelming portion of the lot, it doesn't. I I think, again, it's proportionate to the size of this property, especially in this neighborhood, where, again, a lot of the properties are significantly smaller in terms of lot size. I'd also point out, again, you can look here, and you can see some of the homes, at least from a bird's eye level, looking at the size of them. And I think what we're proposing is certainly substantially compatible with a lot of the neighboring homes in this area. Lastly, and I don't think this really got mentioned too much at the last hearing, is height. So the building height's going to be 24 feet, which by your most standards is not very tall. And most of, a lot of the neighboring properties are significantly taller, just from a visual. The the house at 184 Barcliff is, I believe that was 28 and a half feet tall, so we're over four feet less in height than that house. And it's going to be the same height as what's there now. Again, it's going to be a bigger structure, but that's going to be the height. And while there's additional massing due to the addition, I think, again, it's mitigated by the fact that this height is only at 24 feet, which, again, by by your current standards and most of the projects you see, is quite low. So I'll touch briefly on the criteria. I know you've had a long meeting already, and I've already probably touched on some of these elements through my introduction here. But briefly, number one, adequacy of the site in terms of size. Again, we suggest it's adequate for the proposal. It's 20,000 square feet of area for the house. Again, while we're not going to meet the 40-foot setback to Mousehole Lane, we are going to be setback over 31 feet from Mousehole. We're not further encroaching on the setback to Barcliff, of course. That's going to remain as is. As seen from Barcliff, you're going to see the structure widen a bit. But again, I think that's mitigated by the fact that most of the addition is behind, located exactly behind the existing structure, as seen from Barcliff. I'd also point out that the proposed building coverage is over 500 square feet less than what's permitted for this property under the zoning bylaws. So it's not a situation where we're maxing out coverage by any stretch. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Again, I think that goes along with the gross floor area numbers that I provided to you, including the averages, to show that, as I said, we're not on an island with our gross floor area number. It's a large number, but there are a a number of properties in the area that have a similar size. And again, comparing overall gross floor area to lot size, that percentage, I think, we're very much compatible and really meet the average of this neighborhood. Number three, extent of the proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structural use. The lot is nonconforming, so any increase in living area constitutes an increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure. Also, we are expanding the structure. We're not getting closer to Mousehole Lane, but we're expanding the structure within the setback to Mousehole Lane, which would also be an increase in the nonconforming nature. Suitability of the site. We believe the site is suitable for the proposed project. There'll be no negative impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. There's ample room on site for construction vehicles and construction-related activity. Impact of scale setting and mass of neighborhood visual character. Again, I suggest that will not have a negative impact on neighborhood visual character for a number of the the reasons that I've already mentioned. We're adding the bulk, as seen from Barcliff at least, we're adding the bulk behind the building. As seen from Mousehole, it stepped back even more than it was the previous application. Again, the connector piece is further back than the garage, which breaks up the massing. And again, our building height at 24 feet is not creating a scenario where the mass of the structure overwhelms the streetscape. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. Residential use in a residential neighborhood, compatible. We have adequate water, drainage, and an adequate septic system. Impact on traffic flow and safety. I don't think there's any negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There was some concern at the last hearing about the ability to park sufficient room to park cars on the property. Todd had sketched out the plan where, in addition to the garage, there is plenty of parking on site available, so there won't be a need to park on the street. It's a five-bedroom home existing. It's a five-bedroom home proposed, so there shouldn't be any additional concerns with more traffic. No issues with noise and litter. It has adequate utilities, and 11 and 12 are not applicable. So to sum up, again, it's a significant change, but I think taking a careful look at the numbers for the property and the neighborhood shows that it's not a change that's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none, there are six correspondences that I will read. First, from our health agent, Judith Giorgio. On May 29, 2024, she reviewed the plan to add an addition and attach garage to the property. The property was approved, a septic installed for the existing five-bedroom property. No additional flow is proposed, and she has no concerns. Then we have a note from the Historical Commission dated May 29, 2024. They heard the application for 172 Barcliff in February, and they found that the home is historically significant, but the proposed changes do not material diminish the home's historical significance, historical significance, so they don't impose a demolition delay. Next, we have a note from Dan Russell.
Oh, Madam Chair, just full disclosure, he doesn't own that property anymore.
Right, but he did, I think, when he wrote the letter.
He did, okay.
And I was going to acknowledge that.
Okay, sure, just so, full disclosure.
Yep, you don't have to be on defense. In May 2024, I, my understanding is, he did still own that property. He he wrote the letter saying that he owns the property. He wrote the letter saying that he owns the property. He's in favor of the changes. He reviewed the plans, was in full support. He believes the scale mass of the property is appropriate and compatible with the neighborhood in general, and he wished them good luck. He does not own it anymore, but he opined when he did. Let's see. On August fifth, twenty-twenty-four, we received a note from Tom Harrington. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed enlargement of one-seventy-two Barcliff, located west of Old Harbor Road. This section of Barcliff affords residents and visitors a quiet location within walking distance of the Fishbeer Ballfield downtown. Walking is shared with motor vehicles traveling on Barcliff Ave., which is the main thoroughfare for the neighborhood. One of the, one of a number of renewal reconstruction projects that have occurred in this section on Barcliff over the past few years, one-seventy-two Barcliff differs in two notable ways. First, at five bedrooms, five baths, five living areas, a kitchen with a countertop, seating for ten, multiple laundries, patios, a gym, a pool, a proposed enlargement is scaled to accommodate large gatherings to be for private or rental purposes. Second, the enlargement is neither principally situated along nor vehicular access and parking service from Barcliff. Rather, the proposed structure is to exceed about one-hundred feet along Mousehole Lane and be non-conforming to setback requirements. Vehicular access and parking is to be serviced from Mousehole Lane, which, unlike Barcliff, is a single-vehicle drive that is the only entry, egress, and public safety access for all relative residents on that street. With scaled details such as aesthetics, vehicular access, on-site parking, trash accumulation and removal, public safety, and noise mitigation are elements to be considered in support of scale meetings its intended purpose. With the unique location, aesthetics, again, vehicular access, on-site parking, trash accumulation and removal, public safety, noise mitigation are limitations to be considered in assuring full compatibility with the unique surroundings. Given that one-seventy-two Barcliff encompasses both, it seems, can we shut that off, whoever is now following that rule? That elements of scale limitations of location need seamlessly balanced for, in this instance. Undoubtedly, your review will consider and address any specific concern held by immediate neighbors. In general, I believe review should result in a project that complements and preserves the neighborhood's existing quiet character, supports unobstructed access along Mousehole Lane, and unobstructed walking along Barcliff Ave., both during construction and thereafter following completion, and is otherwise fully compatible with the surroundings in this unique location. He, this person lives on twenty-four Beach Plum Way. Next, we have a note from Mandy and Justin Blair. Thank you for your continued communication regarding the proposed project at one-seventy-two Barcliff. We are pleased with the design and support it as an improvement over the existing property. The finished project should fit nicely with recent enhancements made all around the subject property up and down Barcliff of late. We would also like to thank Marty for his thoughtful communication throughout the process and wish him well with his project. This is again, Mandy and Justin Blair of Win eighty-five Barcliff, received on August seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Next, we have a note from Faras Rauf and Jamelia Hadawi from one-seventy-five Barcliff Ave. And they write on May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, they own the property on one-seventy-five Barcliff, which is directly across the street from one-seventy-two. They received the plans and are in full support of the project. They believe that the scale and mass of the proposal is appropriate and compatible with both this property and the neighborhoods in general. We wish them good luck with the endeavor. And that concludes the correspondence. Now, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? Please raise your hand. Okay, so I'm going to start with the person I saw first, a woman with white pants and a black shirt. When you get to the mic, take your time and state your name, please.
Hi, mine's Diane Rollings, and I live at thirty-five Mousehole. And out of the neighborhood, I'm the only one who's a year-round resident. And I know you know all of this anyways. I just had to write it down. This is the third time that this project's been before the committee. The first time it was withdrawn, the second time it was postponed. And since then, there haven't been any really major changes, except for they did not move the garage forward like they were going to. But it's still, it's a very massive building that I feel is too big for the area. When you come down Barcliff, you're going to look in and see a hundred feet of house, of building, two stories, on a little tiny ten-foot road, which is Mousehole. Even though the property is on Barcliff, they use Mousehole Lane, which, again, is only ten feet wide. On the plan, they have indicated that there'll be many cars parked on the property and two in the garage, I assume. So that's seven cars. And to leave the property, they're going to have to back up onto Mousehole Lane. So if I'm leaving to go to the grocery store, you've got people backing in. And like, again, it's only ten feet wide. They're going to end up on the neighbor's lawn or into the hedge. But I think that's a traffic concern with me coming and going, and also the males, the trash pickup, the delivery people. We have a lot of that kind of stuff that goes down. So I think that creates a safety issue. I grew up on Crow Road my whole life, and I sold Girl Scout cookies on Barcliff Ave. I know those houses. They've always been very, very cute. And yes, they've all been changed. Many have been changed. But they've been changed to the point where they've kept the charm of the town of Chatham. This enormous proposed building, I think, will disturb that. Tourists and new residents come to Chatham for its charm and its quaint neighborhoods, not to see massive party houses. I hope this committee will reject the proposal and maintain the quaintness charm of Chatham for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Charlene Giggly, and we live at fifteen Mousehole Lane, and we have the little cottage to the left of it as you're coming down Mousehole. Please know that one-seventy-two Barcliff does not have deeded access to Mousehole Lane. Mousehole Lane is a single-lane driveway that services three deeded properties: the Eisman Gruski family, Diane Kendrick Rollings, and the Gigglys. And we all oppose this application. We assume total liability and the tax burden, not Marty. Often, as one is exiting Mousehole, cars or trucks that must enter from Barcliff cause one to have to back up, and many times vehicles are forced to back up blindly onto Barcliff in order to allow passage. Mousehole Lane is simply not wide enough for two vehicles to pass side by side. If this massive addition, which now allows for many more than ten people to inhabit, is permitted, this will overburden our deeded right-of-way. With what will be a multitude of cars, the canon will create an unsafe condition on Mousehole Lane and Barcliff. Getting in and out of Barcliff and Mousehole Lane, where Marty's driveway is located, knowing this massive addition can accommodate many, many people, will look and feel and act like a motel parking lot. People coming and going to visit, attend a pool party, going to the store, beach, et cetera, will create an unsafe condition and having to negotiate just to get out of the driveway and then onto Barcliff. Do I need to put a metal guardrail in front of my property where our grandchildren play to prevent people from backing onto our lawn, which they will be forced to do? Presently, there is ten feet from the front lawn to the end of Marty's driveway, which is simply not enough to accommodate the number of potential cars. Any plan for changes from the existing structure makes safety sense to place a driveway on the right side of the house. There is plenty of room on the right to access the property, park vehicles, and easily access Barcliff. Marty's address is Barcliff Ave. anyway, and coincidentally, the original driveway to Marty's home was on the right side of the house when the house was initially placed on the lot. Also note, the massing of the proposed addition is equivalent to a ten-story building on its side, two stories high. Think about that. Ten stories long, two stories high. So on a ten-foot-wide Mousehole Lane. A single man who bought a three-bedroom home, as seen on Zillow, chose to relabel traditional first-floor rooms as bedrooms, so he was somehow able to qualify for a five-bedroom septic. This is all a plan to turn his property from a modest, traditional home that is in the character of the neighborhood into something very different. I believe that when Marty went for historical review, the site plans deliberately left out the proximity and scale of Mousehole Lane in relation to the addition. Those members on the Historical Board may have been led to believe that Mousehole Lane was a traditional road, not a ten-foot-wide private driveway. The Historical Commission has a very limited purview, but as you know, the ZBA is to be concerned with the impact on our neighborhood. The proposed addition is a detriment to the visual quality of the neighborhood. To me, it will seem like the Titanic moored next to a modest dock. Can you imagine if this house is rented and can accommodate numerous people, the logistics of where all the cars will park as it stands now, along the hedge? It will not only look like a used car parking lot, but will wreak havoc safety-wise on Mousehole Lane and Barcliff. Cyclists from the bike route, walkers with carriages, many cars, trucks, landscapers, trash vehicles will be at risk trying to maneuver out of the ten-foot-wide pathway.
Just giving you your thirty-second warning.
Yeah, renters or guests staying there who are not familiar with the area and the usage and the traffic pattern undoubtedly create an unsafe condition. So note the massing of the proposed addition is equivalent, okay, I told you that. I kindly invite all zoning board members with their cars to collectively meet with us on Mousehole Lane, to experience firsthand what it's like to maneuver and negotiate on Mousehole, and to test scenarios of potential problems that will present if this addition is permitted. I propose also that the, again, that the driveway should be on the right side of the home. And I'm a little flustered, but.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. Next, yes, sir. Take your time. Just state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Robert Giggly, and I live at fifteen Mousehole Lane, a director of butter to one-seventy-two Barcliff Ave. I'm here today to express my sincere concerns as it pertains to the applicant's request for relief and approval at ZBA. With the five-bedroom septic system having been approved and installed in two thousand and fifteen, the applicant now comes before the ZBA to request approval and add one bedroom and more than tripling the habitable size of the existing home, from approximately eighteen-hundred and nineteen square feet to approximately fifty-seven-hundred and seventy-eight square feet, an increase of approximately four thousand square feet. Now, that's a big bedroom. Mr. McDonald is requesting a four-thousand increase in habitable space. By order of magnitude, most homes on Barcliff don't approach two thousand square feet, and many, much less than that. Mr. McDonald, by his own admission, stated, and I quote, "As I get older, I want fewer people. Then why build such an imposing house? One immediately thinks short-term rental, multifamily, or resale." This can also be implied when studying the floor plans: multiple proposed living areas, multiple eating areas, multiple sitting areas, et cetera. It may not be strictly in your purview, but a rental property of five bedrooms, ten or more people, potentially ten or more cars, that can, and can even make for more of a congested and dangerous environment with negative impact on traffic flow and safety for the surrounding area and especially Mousehole Lane. And though the current owner may or may not have an interest in the rental property, a future owner may look at its potential as a rental property, leaving us in its wake. It's difficult to gain a full appreciation of the magnitude of what's being proposed because the existing plans are submitted without dimensions, the proposed plans without overall proposed lengths or proposed heights, the site plan makes no reference to scale of Mousehole Lane or Barcliff Ave. Also, the site plan neglects to show in scale any surrounding or existing features such as abutters, properties, and houses. This submission gives the appearance of a seat-of-the-pants, back-of-the-napkin approach, with very pertinent information being left off the plans. By example, when one-eighty-four Barcliff was in front of ZBA, a complete package was presented, similar to what was presented here earlier today. A site plan showing scaled Barcliff Ave and Mousehole Lane, structures on abutters, properties, significant trees, proposed maximum ridge heights, et cetera, so that everyone would have an opportunity to visualize the full impact of the proposal on its surroundings, especially when massing needs to be considered. I know massing shares many meanings, but to me, it's the appearance of the structure as viewed from the exterior, what we as neighbors and passersby see above grade. Mr. McDonald is proposing a hundred-foot-long, two-story structure down a narrow, ten-foot-wide private way, essentially creating a twenty-five-foot-high wall less than twenty-four feet from Mousehole Lane, where a forty-foot setback is required. Though many may look at this proposal from Barcliff as not being overbearing, I can assure you, it's a wolf in sheep's clothing, and let me show you why. Let's consider turning the structure so that the hundred-foot, two-story silhouette is now viewed from Barcliff. Would this orientation be considered appropriate in conforming to the neighborhood? Even the people across the street that view one-eighty-four, one-seventy-two Barcliff and that are in favor of it, if we turn that house and they view the hundred-foot-long silhouette from their front doors, what would they say? So then why should this hundred-foot, hundred-foot-long, twenty-five-foot-high structure be considered aesthetically pleasing and in character for the residents of Mousehole Lane? Some of us may think this is a nice plan, but I think we can all agree.
Sir, I just want to give you your warning, just out of courtesy, you have about twenty more seconds.
Okay. I know that the garage has been moved back to where it was originally put, but it's still two stories, still non-conforming, and still far too massive. We heard you in February when you made several comments about mass and scale, but it appears that the applicant did not. During your deliberations, please consider the long-term unfavorable detrimental consequences of this structure and the way it's just over, it's a huge overreach. I respectfully ask for you not to approve the plan as submitted. I feel common ground can be achieved if a more modest design with a far less mass and a driveway returned to the east of the house with Barcliff Ave access.
All right, I'm going to have to stop you just out of justice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, yes, ma'am. Just remember that it's five minutes, so, if you want, just look over there every once in a while.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Hope Eisman. I reside at twenty-six Mousehole Lane, along with my husband and two dogs. First, I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, because I feel that as a neighbor, I might be able to provide a perspective that might differ from some others that you may have heard from today and previously in February. As I'm sure you've heard by now, Mousehole Lane is one of those quintessentially Chatham lanes, and its name reflects its character. It's quiet, it's tiny, it's only ten feet wide, and it's just over two hundred feet long. And there's deeded access for only three properties: number fifteen, number twenty-six, and number thirty-five Mousehole, two of which are not even visible from Barcliff Road Avenue at all.
It's charming. And in short, it really is more of a driveway than other lanes that you, in Chatham, such as Gladden Lane, which is a private lane off of Barcliff, Blueberry Lane, also off of Barcliff. They're both wider, and they have access to many more homes. With that as a background, and in the interest of time, I really only want to touch on two aspects. The first is traffic and safety. We walk our dogs several times a day down Mousehole and on various routes along Barcliff and surrounding roads. We're familiar with traffic patterns, and I can tell you that particularly in the morning and in the evening, Barcliff is pretty busy. Cars that cut through from Croll Road to Shore Road, dog walkers, visitors headed to the Fish Pier, biking families coming on and off the rail trail, parents with strollers, et cetera. There's no sidewalk on Barcliff, but generally, visibility is okay when you're traveling along it. However, when you're exiting Mousehole Lane, you have to creep up slowly to the end, you have to peer around the hedges and the trees before proceeding because none of us want to hit a pedestrian or another car while exiting. In addition, as you've heard, the width of Mousehole is only 10 feet, is only, allows one car at a time, and there's no turnaround anywhere. Despite only three of us, there's already significant usage of the lane from, you know, the mailman and the landscape trucks, et cetera. Therefore, the parking area as proposed, with spots for five parked cars on Mousehole and potentially many more, given that it's a two-car garage, the size of the proposed residence and the large backyard area would add significantly to the number of cars on our little lane, many of whom would be temporary visitors using the lane and exiting onto Barcliff. I would like to point out that the two homes to the east of 172 Barcliff, number 150 and number 166, are both four-bedroom, five-bath houses, so they're actually smaller than this proposed house. They're rental houses, and they often have more than five cars each at one time. So I'm sure, as the board and the town is aware of, I think it's very legitimate to question whether at some point this or another owner in the future will want to rent the property, thus inviting large numbers of people and cars onto the lane. What's more, as you've heard, there's very limited room for those cars to back up out of the parking places as proposed. With a front lawn directly behind the proposed parking area, it is a significant safety hazard for children, animals on the lane, and of course, for 15 Mousehole. So with all this in mind, I would like the board to consider requiring that the garage access and parking be moved to the other side, the east or the right side of 172 Barcliff, where there's ample room and a better sightline for exiting onto Barcliff and would not burden the already limited size of Mousehole Lane. I also understand that 172 Barcliff has no deeded right to the use of Mousehole Lane either, which is also an issue of those of us who do have legal access. The other thing I am, and I'm not going to go into detail, I'm also concerned about the aesthetics. I have no doubt that the renovation as proposed will be, in general, attractive and conforming to Chatham's historic and community standards. And as such, I have no objections, but with only 23 to 30 to a 40-foot buffer strip between the asphalt of Mousehole and the side of the building, I fear that this long building as proposed will significantly alter the charming look of the lane and cause it to look like an urban alley at worst.
I'm going to give you your 20-second warning.
And at best, be lopsided with a beautiful cottage and a lush green lawn on one side and an extensive wall and a parking area on the other. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Litchfield. Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield. I represent the Wigleys, and I'm here speaking today for Bob Gruski. I will try to be very brief. The chair began this hearing and the last hearing by asking what changes were made, and the answer is unfortunately not enough. When the Wigleys contacted me in May when this proposal came back, I spent an hour watching the tape, as I know Mr. Norcross did. I listened to what you said about not increasing the nonconformity by moving the garage back from Mousehole, but I think more importantly, and critical to your criteria, about mass and streetscape. So when I saw the revised plans, I was very surprised to see that the mass was unchanged. Gross floor area is not readily apparent from the plans as filed, but after doing the numbers, such as they were, the GFA is going from approximately 2,900 square feet, including basement, to approximately 6,400 square feet, including the basement. And again, the living area, while not readily calculable, the assessors say is currently 1,700, and it's going to something like 5,700. And coverage is exactly the same as it was in February. Then reached out to my brother, Mr. Norcross, met with him in his office on June 11th, suggested that plans be meaningfully changed, moving to the driveway to the east side. It's not really our purview to redesign it, but after several requests for updates or even just a response, after seven weeks, I heard on August 2nd that there weren't any changes. I was disappointed. I did talk to the building department and confirmed yesterday that yes, they are down to just nine open building permits. That's significantly better than they were, but I don't think it's proper. I know that there are some other large and thus ostensibly comparable houses in the neighborhood, but as has been pointed out, several of them are being used as short-term rentals, something which should not necessarily be replicated. But this house as designed is very different from theirs. Sir, would you put up that side elevation, please? Mr. Norcross indicated that the rear had been reduced. That one. Yeah, it's maybe a foot lower, but having that facade facing Mousehole is not a meaningful change. When older houses are expanded in the rear, the usual norm is to have a step back, step back, step back. That's the norm, whether it's on Old Harbor Road or Cross Street, that is what is historically done. Here, that's not the case at all. The full height remains 100 feet long, maybe it's a foot lower than it was. And say that the height is less than that at 184 Barcliff is somewhat disingenuous because I know many of you remember the history with 184 Barcliff. Moreover, what's, and more importantly, what's going on in this neighborhood reminds us of what the SJC said in Bjorkland, that quote, "Many municipalities do not welcome the building with structures that represent the popular trend of mansionization, and that towns may permissively attempt to limit those adverse effects." Yeah, Barcliff has changed. It's changed a lot since I was a kid. When I was young, the west side, the west side of Old Harbor, had as many fishermen as anything else, and it will probably continue to change, but this is one change that you don't have to endorse because with its mass, as shown there, particularly from Mousehole, with 100-foot-long, two-story length, its impact on the streetscape, it's not something that should be allowed. It does not meet the criteria for the grant of a special permit. So today, we plainly had a better presentation because they have a better lawyer, but the plans are no better. The house plans are exactly the same. Moving it back a foot or three feet from Mousehole doesn't solve the problem. Returning with the same house, to me, displays something of a tone deafness to the comments and suggestions you made in February. There is apparently an unwillingness to revise the plans to reduce the mass, which is a word that Mr. DeBoer used, Mr. Nixon used, the chair used. Many of you used that word in February. That would have prevented what will otherwise be a substantially more detrimental impact in the neighborhood. I began by saying that I heard what you said in February, but based on what's in front of you today, it's obvious to me that not everyone in this room heard what you said in February. The mass of the house is unchanged and is still far too great. Its impact on the neighborhoods on Mousehole will be substantially more detrimental. Even if some, plainly not all are, but even if some of the criteria are met, it is, as you know, the grant of a special permit is discretionary. This is one on which you should exercise your discretion, and the applicant should be encouraged to work with his neighbors for more palatable change. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like an opportunity for rebuttal? Attorney Norcross?
Just to, again, go through, I'll try to highlight, I guess, some of the common concerns we heard just now. Again, a lot of it seems to be based on the access off of Mousehole Lane, which, again, I would understand if we were creating access that didn't exist, but that's where the access is now. We're not adding an access or a driveway off Mousehole that's not there. It exists, that's the way it's used. The garage has been there since 1981, so you presume the driveway's been there at least that long, if not before. A little bit of Twilight Zone in terms of hearing some of the concerns, because when I wasn't involved with 184 Barcliff, it was the congestion on Barcliff Lane. We can't, you know, Barcliff Avenue, having another driveway on Barcliff Avenue is going to create problems and congestion and sightlines, et cetera. And now we're on Mousehole, and everybody wants to put us over on Barcliff Avenue, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me when the concern last time was, well, it's another driveway and it's more cars going out onto Barcliff, as opposed to, again, we showed the cars there because there was concerns raised from the board members last time that can the cars fit on the property, they're going to stick out on Mousehole. We're showing you can fit cars on the property. And again, you have a garage, so there's no need to park onto Mousehole. I know other concerns that were mentioned. Again, the massing, yes, it is, it's a large expansion to the rear, but it is only 24 feet tall, which is short, I would say, relatively short by many of the projects as you see before you and most of the homes in this neighborhood. The traffic, excuse me, the rental question, I think, is really a nonstarter for this board. I think it's unfair to presume my client's going to rent the property. It's also unfair, some of the personal attacks that say that he was deceptive in the plans that he filed intentionally, I think is very unfair to this board and to my clients. I did want to address that. I do take umbrage with Mr. Litchfield's suggestion in terms of us not responding to his client's request. The request was, well, put your driveway on Barcliff Avenue, waive any rights in Mousehole Lane, and then we have something to talk about. So it wasn't, well, why don't you reduce this, why don't you reduce that? It was a whole-scale change of the project and waiving of rights that he has in Mousehole Lane, which is really a nonstarter for my client. So, again, to say that we didn't respond, there wasn't much to respond to. So that, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, is there anybody else here that wishes to speak against our Microsoft teams? Just to make sure. R has a specific question? No? Seeing none. Okay, questions from the board then?
Well, I guess, I guess the obvious question is, would you, would your client consider moving the driveway? I mean, I know, are moving the garage or redoing the plans that would make it, you know, a little bit more, less mass, less of a worry for traffic and parking?
I mean, the driveway's complicated, to be honest. You have a septic system over there, which I guess there's ways around that, but that would involve really, I mean, a wholesale change of everything that you're doing in terms of, on the inside, with a lot of that, in terms of moving the driveway over to that side. He felt, again, that, looking at some of the neighborhood comparisons, that this project would be looked at a bit differently at this hearing, so I think he is, he likes this design, obviously, so he's back here again with it. Would he consider some reduction? Sure, I'd be happy to talk about that. But, again, our feedback was really relative to using Mousehole Lane, which, again, I don't, I think that's really a benefit for, other parties obviously disagree, but an access off of Barcliff is adding another driveway, and we've heard last time that folks thought there's already too much congestion on Barcliff Ave, so why are we going to add a driveway on there where people are backing up when we can use Mousehole and there's sufficient area to turn out and back up? So, again, size, certainly something to talk about, but I don't think the access is really something Mr. McDonald wants to consider.
Or even perhaps detaching the garage?
We talked about that at some extent, and I think that, for a number of reasons, the connector he feels is important to the use of the house in terms of having the ability to go without, you know, going outside, but obviously, if that was something the board wanted to see, I would talk to him about that as well. Again.
Okay, questions? Paul?
I have no questions.
Steve?
I guess I have several questions. I was going to ask you to summarize the changes.
Put your microphone on, Steve, please. Thank you.
I was going to ask you to summarize the changes that were made since the last time everyone was here, and I think you sort of addressed that. I'm glad to see that some effort was made to move the garage back to, at least to where it exists today, but I don't think that really addresses any of the other concerns that I have about the proximity to Mousehole and the congestion that it would cause on Mousehole. Do you have, so it looks like the ridge is the ridge height of the existing house, and the addition is slightly lower than the existing ridge height?
The connector portion will be slightly lower, and then the garage, I believe, goes back up to meet the same height as the existing house.
Okay. But that's still within the 30-foot?
That's 24 feet.
Right.
Yeah, oh yeah, well within the 30-foot.
Do you know what the overall length of the existing house is, or the depth of the house now, and what the proposed depth of the house?
I believe the proposed is 99. I couldn't tell you offhand the existing configuration for the house.
See, that would, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Todd, do you have that information?
It's 99.
Are you talking, I'm sorry.
No, no, what's the existing house now?
From length-wise?
The depth of it.
99, and what's the proposed going to be?
You can't speak from the audience.
No, no, come here, Todd.
That's not true.
No, I, I'll, yeah, sorry. He's trying to know this, no, hold on, let me just ask you before you answer. So this is, he wants to know, this is 99 from here to here. What is it from here to here?
From here to here?
Yeah.
So it's.
Introduce yourself and speak into the mic, but.
Yeah, so this is 24, and this is 26. So it's, sorry. Yeah, so this is 24 feet, plus 26.
52. Yeah, okay. Do you want to look at this?
Yep.
Okay. We're just going to double-check one thing, Steve. We'll be right back with you on that.
Yeah, so it's.
Sorry.
Yeah, so 26 plus 24.
Okay, it's around 52, Steve.
Because it's detached anyway, so it's hard to say.
Oh, I didn't include the garage in that number.
No, no, but the house itself is about 52.
Is around 52, excluding the garage.
So you're almost doubling the depth of the house from Barcliff.
I wouldn't necessarily.
From 52 to 99.
Well, then I think you'd have to calculate the garage in that number existing, so I wouldn't necessarily agree with you.
So it's not apples to apples, right?
That's what, yes, I would.
Right. So, what other questions do you have, Steve?
Okay, well, I was going to, I was going to ask you about the.
We're going to go to a different question now.
Okay. It's okay, Todd.
I was going to ask you about the, I think you have the ability to move the driveway. If the house has a Barcliff Avenue address, it should exit out onto Barcliff Avenue. And you wouldn't be backing out onto Barcliff Avenue because you would have a turnaround coming out of the other side of the garage into the backyard, and then you could pull out onto Barcliff Avenue, you wouldn't be backing out onto Barcliff. So I think that would, that would solve some of the traffic concerns for the folks on Mousehole Lane. I'd also like someone to explain the need for multiple living rooms. There's at least two living rooms, a den, a study, a family room.
Well, that would not be a topic that he would have to do some explaining to, to us, as they say? He doesn't have to do that?
No, 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 but I think, well, I think the multiple living rooms and everything gives the perception that this house is going to be.
I know, but if it's going to be a rental, that's his perfect right to do that. So that's not in our purview, as much as it may be painful to acknowledge, it's not.
Okay.
No.
And then the garage issue, if you, if, that garage that's there now, it doesn't look like it's been used in a long time. So, you know, just the fact that moving it back to allow additional parking, I don't really think that's, I don't really think that's doing any good, and I don't think the garage is being used as a garage anyway.
It's mostly storage right now. They park in front of it, so. In theory, I guess you're helping some of the situation by having a usable garage.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, I have a few questions, Jamie. Can we start with what is meant by the deeded rights? I see that, I mean, that was at the start of this hearing, but there are other people that live back there, so can you just explain that briefly?
Well, I have never done the title to this property, never represented Marty in any sort of purchase or refinance or anything relative, so I'm not sure on the access and deed of rights piece. It seems they're alleging that his property does not have a right in the deed to access Mousehole Lane. So, but I don't have, I haven't done any further research on that issue, so I really can't provide much clarification, other than that's the essence of the claim.
Okay, I saw Mr. Litchfield stand up. Can you answer that, or? Okay. I just want to understand it a little better because. I just want to understand it a little better, because Mrs. Iceman said there were three houses that had it, but there are a couple more back there.
Thank you, if I could. It is my opinion that the property does not have, subject property does not have deeded access. This property and a lot behind it were owned by George and Helen Killen. George and Helen Killen both died a number of years ago, and their family members who inherited the property conveyed the property out. The property in the rear, which is not at issue today, was conveyed, quote, "together with and subject Indian law rights and easements over land formerly of Burgess and others to and from the townway called Barcliff Avenue." That property clearly has access. The deed from the executor or personal representative of Helen Killen's estate for this property says, makes no reference whatsoever, Danny writes. And in fact, this is, it may not be strictly of interest to the board today, but I have a plan, when this property was first created, Killen family, which makes plain that the abutting property is not a way, not a road, it is instead owned by the predecessors entitled to the Gwigglys. So in my opinion, there are not legal rights. There's a question that some lawyers may someday argue about whether there have been permissive rights or prescriptive rights. We think they were permissive. I suspect that other people think they're prescriptive, but I don't think there are any.
Okay.
Just to piggyback off, I mean, there's, there's a deeded right and a legal right can be two different things. So there could be easements created other ways, not Thismas or Litchfield's alluding to. And again, the garage's been there since 1981, so this isn't a situation where this driveway appeared recently.
Well, that's kind of where, right. Well, that's why I was asking the question, because you're using it today, and I wondered how, how that was working out. Okay. I thought maybe that could be a simple answer, but I don't think it's, okay. I want to go through, so I, are both of the chimneys going to be gone? Looks like, the current two chimneys, I don't see them referenced in any of the new.
Both chimneys are removed, Todd? Yes, they're going to be gone.
Chimneys are gone. Okay, can we go to EX1 and EX0? I thought I heard in the previous hearing that there were five bedrooms existing today, and there were five that are proposed, but in EX1 and EX0, I only count four bedrooms.
Well, the Health Department considers it a five-bedroom. So they presumably, and I haven't asked Judy Georgio this question, presumably are considering one of the rooms that are labeled on this as something else to be a bedroom.
Okay.
So, because her letter, if you remember, said it's an existing five-bedroom.
Yeah, I do remember that, but I mean, I'm just...
That's a situation, to be totally honest, we encounter quite a bit. There's these rooms that were created, you know, and it's used as a den, but it meets the definition of a bedroom under the state code, therefore it's considered a bedroom under the health regulations.
Okay, so with the chairwoman's indulgence, I'm going to ask the next question, which is, I want to get to floor plans, because you can call these rooms anything you want, and you just basically said, said that.
No, that's not true. It has to, if it meets the definition in terms of size, privacy, windows, ceiling height, it can be considered a bedroom. There's certain parameters, if it doesn't meet those parameters, it's not considered a bedroom. So no, I wouldn't say you can label anything you want, but again, there are a lot of instances in older homes especially, there's a room that's used as a study or a den or whatever, but it meets the definition of a bedroom, and it's considered to be a bedroom, because it could be used that way legally.
Okay, can we go to A1A, A1B, and A0B? We're going to just take a brief look at the floor plans. I'm not going to go over in detail, but I did want to...
Try to keep it in the form of a question.
I do, I have this as a question. So my comment, and then it will be a question, is that I count, in looking at these three pages, five bedrooms, five bathrooms, two living rooms, one family room, one study, one den, and then there's a, there's a room on one, on A1B in the front east corner that doesn't have any label. Do you know what that is?
I don't, I can ask the builder if you'd like me to take the time to do that.
Okay, so that would be one question. And then, while we're doing that, there's...
It's probably not relevant to get him started again, so let's not do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't know what it...
All right, I'll just make the comment that there are two rooms in the floor plans that, one is in the basement and one is on the first floor, that do not have...
Again, I would rely on Judy Georgio to review the plans, and she doesn't determine those to be bedrooms under, again, pursuant to the letter that she submitted, so I think we have to rely on that.
Does she have this exact floor plan? You know that for a fact?
I don't, I don't know that for a fact, no, I can't say that.
She does, this is what was sent to her, for, under my request for comment.
So I agree with you that, that's why we hear about five case, five-foot opening casement openings and all that, because if she thought something was a bedroom, she'd be the first one to say it.
Okay, so, Jamie, you weren't at the last hearing, but at the last hearing, we talked a little bit about, actually, it was a question Mr. Veatch had, about the configuration of the garage, the proposed garage, had all these windows in the back, and the explanation was, is that it created a sightline to the pool, but the garage has now shifted, it's four feet closer, away from Mouse Hole Lane. Is there still, is there still an explanation for that configuration?
Not that I was given. I'm happy to ask, again, if you'd like, but I don't know myself, that's the reason, for maintaining the windows, other than perhaps providing some light.
Okay, so I just wanted to, this isn't a question, it's a comment, but it's a brief one. We, we did talk about massing last time, pretty significantly. We had, our hearing last time was 56 minutes, so it was almost an hour, and we talked, as Mr. Litchfield pointed out, we talked about massing, we talked about traffic flow and safety, and we talked about compatibility of the size of the structure in the neighborhood. And when, and, and one of the things I specifically said, which is why I'm bringing this up, is that I felt like the gross floor area, while not a perfect indicator, is an indication of massing. And since we can quantify that, that's why I brought that up last time. So, this picture, which is one of the images that we have, is a good example of the doubling of the size of this house and the massing. And so, that was not a question, but that was my comment. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Dave Veatch, do you have any questions?
I, yeah, I, I don't know, maybe I can, I, I'm just really unclear about Mouse Hole Lane and its effect on the, is it, is it a townway? Is it? I mean, I'm here as a...
Nobody from the audience can, can make comments if you, if Mr. Litchfield wants to answer the question, perhaps? Does that work for you?
It's not a townway, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I'm trying to get some education here, because I'm, you know...
Looks familiar, but...
Can I just, maybe just...
If I could try to respond, Madam Chair.
Yes, is it a public way?
Just wanted to make sure that Mr. Narcos had seen what I'm going to reference. I'm looking at a 1948 plan that the Killen family had done, which shows Mouse Hole Lane owned by George Nickerson and Roy Nickerson. Then subsequently in 19, there was no garage on the property at that time. Subsequently in 1974, the Killens had a plan done on the, for the subject lot.
Are these recorded, would you say?
Yes.
And then Sarah can pull them up?
Yeah, 282, or I'll be happy to, 28212, I'm sorry, 28216, Sarah, is the more recent one. And that 1980, 74 plan does not show Mouse Hole Lane, it simply shows a division of the Killen property, which is now the applicant's property, and there is no way there, and that's because the property is owned by others. In my opinion, again, there are no rights in it.
So, in other words, if...
It is not a townway at all.
So, so then, I'm, I'm just trying to think about, so what, it, it looks to me like, as far as zone is concerned and setbacks, it's being treated as, as a road.
That's correct, yeah, we were...
And so how is it that, I mean, i- if it's not, if it's not a road, why does it need a 40-foot setback?
Because there's many types of roads.
Okay. I'm just curious.
If I could, it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the 25.
It doesn't even meet the setback.
Well, the garage, the addition does.
Right, but the garage, but the addition, all right, I see it's 23-point, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the existing house is 23, the garage is 31.
So it's not meeting the 25-foot setback?
The existing house does not, no.
Does not, right, okay. And then, aside from that, Jamie, you indicated that, and I see on the, on the site plan that their septic system is on the other side of the house. And that's, that's, so putting in my, to put a driveway over that, that might require replacing elements of the septic system in order to have an H10-type tank, et cetera, is that, I'm just asking, is that a possibility, or does it need to be done? Would it need to be done? Do you know? Does an engineer...
If, if you had, if there was going to be driven over, it does have to have certain, an H10, I believe, right, or H21, one of the two, you have to have on it, to, in order to be, allow for cars to go over it. So there is, again, it's, I suppose it's feasible, but the access on Mouse Hole was something that wasn't...
So, but, but it just sounds like, as far as the access on Mouse Hole, that's sort of, it's not really part of our thing.
It's not before, right now.
Yeah, so, okay. So I think, I think those are the only questions I have.
Very good. Ed, question? Ed, after?
Sort of caught up on the whole Mouse Hole. Does the town plow Mouse Hole Lane? No.
We're going to take that, I'll take judicial notice of the fact that somebody shook their head no.
And I guess the other question, has there any, has there ever been controversy about this property using Mouse Hole Lane before, before they...
Marty's been here since 2008, and he's never had any concerns.
So it's just the, the proposal that's causing the...
I would say that's true. I mean, he's, neighbors have asked them to park in his driveway over the years, and they've had overflow parties, and he's been happy to do it, so no one seemed to mind then, but obviously with the...
I guess the other question is, currently, from the front of the house to the back of the garage is the 100 feet we're talking about?
The 100 feet, for, that's just for the new design? So from the front of the house to the back of the garage? Yeah.
Yeah, the existing house to the back of the garage is 100 feet, we're basically the same length. So we're really talking about just filling in 20 feet in between the two properties is what we're talking about, as far as massing.
Yeah, in terms of adding structure that's not there now, would be in that middle section there, the connector.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Nixon, questions?
No questions.
I, I would just sit, you know, plain, just outright ask, why didn't you do anything about the mass? I mean, we talked about it for an hour here. Why?
My client felt strongly that, you know, a lot of the elements, he thinks, in terms of why this actually is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of size and everything else, just was not addressed.
So he just disagrees with the board?
You could say that, yes.
Okay, fine. Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes. Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Well, and I vote yes as well. Okay, now we'll actually deliberate, and why don't we start with Dave Veatch, just get it off your chest?
Okay. Well, despite the, the issues with Mouse Hole and things, I mean, I have to totally set that aside in, in my look at, at this situation. And I, I don't share the same concerns that have been expressed about the massing along the Mouse Hole Lane side of the house, in that, as, you know, Ed and I are looking, we're looking at the site plan here and put the scale on it, and it is, that's the existing length of, of buildings there, not, but without the, the infill of a connector piece in between. So if you go from the back of the garage to the front of the porch, existing porch, you're at essentially 100 feet. So, this, there, and admittedly, or granted, there's, there is a proposal to add another floor to the garage and to the rear of the main house to add on a little bit and add that connector. But I don't, I mentioned it, I think in February, I know, because I just watched both these meetings, again, I probably wouldn't have remembered, but I did mention that, you know, I had looked at some of the size of the buildings other in the neighborhood, and Jamie gave us a better indication of that. When I look at some, when I look at those, some of those numbers, I, I don't, I don't see that this, this proposal is out of scale with other buildings in the neighborhood, as, as much as, as being emphasis. It is larger than some others, but that length and, and that configuration, I, I pointed out in February, is, is very close to a, a house that was redone a number of years ago in my neighborhood on the corner of Main Street and Lighthouse Lane. And also with the blessing of the Historical Commission, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I, I look at that building there now, and I, I measured it on Google Maps, and it might be 15 feet less in length, but it's at least 85 feet in length. And, and it doesn't stand out. It doesn't stand out in the neigh, in that neighborhood, and it's all, you know, all the Greek Revivals law is kind of lined up, and, and it fits. So, I, I'm going to say, in, in this case, I feel like if the proposal that they're doing, when it's all said and done, and, and, and if it's said and done, and, and the neighborhood repairs any contritor, I, I don't think it's going to be a negative, have a negative impact on the, on, I don't, I don't find that it, the scale setting and mass for this proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think we can see it as perhaps being detrimental, others obviously do, but I don't see it as being substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood, so I can support it.
Okay, Dave Nixon?
Well, I feel just the opposite with Mr. Veatch. And we're going back to the neighborhood here. Your neighborhood is one thing, this is another neighborhood. And to me, it stands out, you know, we've got 100 feet by 24 feet. This is a massive structure. And for that area and the homes around it, and particularly the other folks who live on Mouse Hole, this is, I use the word gigantic in relation to the others. So I do not believe I could support it in any way, shape, or form unless it was substantially reduced.
Okay, Ed, you didn't go yet, no.
I didn't, yeah.
You might as well finish this.
So, I, I've seen, you know, these types of renovations around town quite a bit, where someone's trying to save a historical building. And, you know, they're making an effort to, to save the, the front of the house, it's historic, and it, it doesn't, because of the lot, and because you're trying to save that historic part of the structure, it, the buildings do get long. I mean, they, they get long, and there's an existing garage back here. Yes, we're adding it, they're adding a second story to it, but really, they're infilling, infilling that 20 feet in, in between the two structures. As far as Mouse Hole Lane, it seems to me that, I mean, there's ample room to turn around and to go onto Mouse Hole Lane. I'm not sure adding another driveway onto Barcliff's a good idea, I'm not, I, I've seen traffic studies before, I know curb cuts onto roads are, you know, they like to see them minimized instead of increased. You know, I, I'm willing to, I'm not voting, but I would support it because I'm willing to, there to be a little leeway, because he's making an effort to save that historic structure, and it doesn't leave a lot of options, especially on a long, narrow lot, as far as what to do, so.
Proposals today, I think that I agree with Dave Nixon on this one. There's a large structure that's going to be in existence there, and I think... going to be in existence there, and I think when I look at our standards and I consider the extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure, in this case, the increased living area, clearly, there's a substantial increase in living area. Growth floor area is going from 2196 to 6,157. And there aren't many places that are at that level that are also on a lot this size. So I think that it does not comply with the number three, our standard. And I think that the impact of the scale on the neighborhood visual character does have a negative effect overall. There's some impact on traffic flow and safety in the sense that there's going to be a much more intensive use of the property, and therefore, larger traffic problems with respect to Mousehole, but also with respect to Barcliff. Barcliff is, is better able to handle it because you're not dealing with a 10-foot right-of-way or driveway. But the other standard of compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, it seems to me, this has a negative effect on, on neighboring properties. So overall, I think it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as proposed right now without revisions. So that would be my view.
Thank you. Lee, if you were voting?
I'm gonna be brief, because I'm not voting. So I think, I think what hurts this application is, is Mousehole Lane, and not because it's a private road or a small lane, but it's because it's kind of an open space. If the lot were in and of itself, and you could landscape it, and you would barely, you know, barely see how far the house went back, you wouldn't see the mass, that would help a lot, but that's not the case. So mass is still a concern for me. And anything that they can do to reduce the mass, vary the height, disconnect the garage, lower the garage, anything would be helpful in my opinion.
And Steve?
Yeah, I sort of agree with, with Lee. I don't think there was enough done to address the massing issue. I think there's some other options that could be followed to alleviate some of the pressure that, or the perceived pressure that there would be on Mousehole Lane. And I think this needs to be revisited again.
Very good. And Ginny, you are voting, how are you gonna vote?
Yeah, I, I think Lee brings up a great point about, you know, just seeing all that from Mousehole Lane. And so I, I also want to go back to the comments that Dave Veach and Ed made about, and Ed in particular, about, I appreciate him restoring the historic home too, but when you look at what's being proposed, this isn't really a Greek revival anymore. It really never was a Greek revival, it was kind of a hybrid, and Historic even said it was called no style. But by adding these, you're not just adding to the height, Ed made the comment about the length, and we all understand, I've seen it successfully in town as well, and I commented on that at our last hearing. But I don't know that they went this wide as well as back. And I know this is just a portion, it's, it's not this wide all the way back, but to me, this really distorts the Greek revival look, which is what we typically see in town when we see these really long homes. So this is just my little version of that picture, because I didn't know we had the picture, but you can really see the increased mass from Barcliff. This picture is the one I showed before. You really can see the mass because I agree that while we're only talking about this part in the middle is different between the garage and the home, but the double, going up higher to the second story, everything in yellow is what's not there today. That's more than 20 feet. So I, I, in summary, think that it, I was disappointed that we spent an hour last time talking very specifically about criteria five, two, and eight, and I don't think we did enough on those two for me to be able to support it.
What would you like to do, Mr. Norcross?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd ask if we could withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, Paul? Can they? Oh, yes.
Thank you. I, I'll be very brief, because it's been a long day. I ordinarily support the right of an applicant to withdraw without prejudice. However, the repetitive petition process is warranted here. In the leading case on the repetitive petition process, Judge Cass said that it prevents the neighbors from having to return to the barricades. That means that the applicant has to make significant and responsive changes, take them to the planning board, convince the planning board that they are responsive, and then come back to you to determine whether they are responsive. I'm not trying to make more work for Mr. Norcross or his client, I'm trying to prevent my clients from having to return to the barricades yet again. So I would ask that you vote on this proposal.
Let's decide whether you have standing to do that.
I'm simply asking you, that's all.
Okay, all right. I need a moment.
Okay, I, as I understand it, you've moved to withdraw without prejudice?
I can, if I may have a moment to comment on that.
All right, go ahead.
I mean, I think it's a very draconian result here. Again, I understand this is the second time with largely, essentially, largely the same plan. Again, he didn't have the benefit of counsel at the last hearing in February. I think he wanted to see if, again, with the presentation today, he truly felt that there were items here that could be brought forward that would be helpful in terms of the board's consideration. He's not trying to waste anyone's time, including the board or the neighbors. I think a withdrawal without prejudice, again, he's not gonna come back with the same plan. If he's gonna come back with anything, it's gonna have to be substantially different, we understand that for approval. So I think to stick him with a two-year moratorium on a redesign, short of going to the planning board in here, I mean, we're just gonna clog up agendas for no reason on that.
But, you know, I have to just say that you might have been misinformed by your client, because he had already had the fence around the pool last time. That had already been done the last time we looked at this, I believe it was.
No, it wasn't.
Well, I guess we were in preparation for it, and then it got withdrawn, so we had gone by.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it seemed like it was already done.
And I know, again, just to piggyback, there were a number of concerns raised, not necessarily relative to the application, but I think board members were reasonably concerned about those items, so.
But not, like, I think we were wholesale disregarded.
I'm sorry?
I just think we were completely disregarded by your client. I think, you know, we, we said a lot of things, and he just wanted to see if you could, you know, spin it another way, but it was the same plan, really, you know, and it was, you know, it's wasted a lot of time. So I don't like to be draconian either, so I think I want to hear from my board members to see what they want to do, because I think that's what Mr. Nixon has done in the past, checked with other people, and that's what makes us a good board. So why doesn't everybody decide whether this should be voted on, or, or continued? What do you think, David?
I think that, this is only, I can only think of one other time in my time on the board where we were discussing something like this, but I, I think they've heard the message, and I, and I don't...
You want to continue?
And so I, I want to allow them to continue, to withdraw without prejudice.
Withdraw without prejudice. What about you, Ed? Withdraw without prejudice, or should we vote?
I would say withdraw without prejudice, only, only because there were, I think, a couple of us the last time that actually thought the plan was okay, and a couple again today. So I, you know, perhaps we sent, you know, we sent a mixed message, I think.
Okay. What do you think, David?
Yeah, I, I believe that we should allow them to withdraw. I think the message was very strong from some of us, and as Ed, you know, David pointed out, they also were very strong and a positive. So I think a vote on it would be something that we would only do if we felt we've been really ignored. So if they came again and the same thing happened, okay, that's a different story, but I do not believe we should not honor Mr. Norcross's request for a withdrawal.
So we'll make it quicker. Is there any of you four members think that we should actually just vote and cut it off? No. Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to make sure. So message sent. Paul?
I will move to grant the requested relief of withdrawal without prejudice.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
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 Yes, and so that's unanimous. And can we just ask that you find out what the story is with Mousehole legally?
Sure.
That would be helpful, the next time.
Yeah, absolutely. Do some research on that.
Whenever you do come back.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. So no certain date, right?
No.
All right. So, line up the, one more application for today is 485 Shore Road. These are steps, and this is application 24-078. We'll just take a couple of minutes, let the room clear out.
Application number 24-078, Greg F. Butler, 2022 Family Trust, and Heather R. Butler, 2022 Family Trust, care of Terrence J. Hurry, Esquire, 15 Cape Lane, Brewster, Mass., 02631. Owner of property located at 485 Shore Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map, 16G Block 3, Lot A1. The applicant seeks to construct an elevated stairway and landings under Section 4A 3A on the access easement to which they are a party, to the access easement, to which they are a party located at 500 Shore Road. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D to be of protective bylaw.
Please state your name and...
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm an associate attorney at Sanion Associates in Brewster. And with me tonight is Don Bracken from Bracken Engineering, and together we represent the applicants, Heather and Greg Butler, who are with us this evening. To start off, I figured I would give a summary of the project, turn it over to Don for the technical aspects, and then touch upon the special permit criteria, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Sure. So Heather and Greg own 485 Shore Road. The easement itself is located on the southern boundary of 500 Shore Road. The board does have some familiarity with 500 Shore Road and the immediate area, because earlier this year, you reviewed and approved similar stairwell projects, both at 500 and 498. In fact, Attorney Litchfield gave what I would call an excellent summary of the overall property's history and actions taken at town meeting with respect to applicable bylaws. I would have participated, or at least attended that meeting. I was ill at home, but I did watch it live on Microsoft Teams. So I will note that our notice of intent is pending at conservation. We had our most recent hearing yesterday. We received some feedback from commission members regarding some additional plantings. During a previous hearing, we had been requested to install beach grass underneath the proposed stairwell, which we did show on a subsequent plan. As far as additional mitigation efforts are concerned with additional planting within the easement area itself, we are taking a look at that. That was brought up during the hearing yesterday. We're taking a closer look at that because of the previous efforts by 500 Shore. It appears that some of their mitigation from their project had come into the easement area itself as well. So in order to satisfy conservation's concerns, we're just taking a closer look at that aspect of the project in order to propose our own mediation. But I will say that overall, our project's goal is, first off, to be neighborly with both 500 and 498 Shore Road, but also to respect the existing conditions on the site. And that's not only 500's existing landscaping, but also taking the environment into concern as well with, with the shore on its way down to Aunt Lydia's Cove. Touching upon the history of the easement itself, it was created in the 1980s. There has been continuous use of that since then. You may recall that Attorney Litchfield did, did give a history of the easement and the property itself. The larger portion on the Aunt Lydia's Cove side was split off and subdivided, along with our client's property and the other properties involved on Aunt Lydia's Way. In doing so, they reserved that 10-foot easement along the southern portion of 500 Shore Road for access to Aunt Lydia's Cove. And that's exactly why we're proposing the stairwell at this time. When you, if you've been on site, the last time I was there was early April, there has been a considerable amount of erosion. I think the board's aware of that, not only this board, but conservation as well, with the previously approved projects. There has been a considerable amount of, considerable amount of erosion since the 1980s. It's just simply not safe to traverse down to Aunt Lydia's Cove at this point. So that's exactly why we're proposing the stairwell. Stairwell itself would provide safe and managed access, not only for pedestrians, both young and old, but it also would take into consideration the environment within the easement area with the proposed plantings. We're hoping, and the previously approved stabilization project from 500, it would just provide safe access overall, both for pedestrians and for the environment over time. In, in the future, it would also prevent further erosion through those proposed plantings that we are looking into with conservation. So our next meeting with them is on September 11th, so we're hoping to get out to the site, take a look around, and propose some additional plantings, and hopefully have an approval from them on the 11th itself. From here, I will turn it over to Don to talk about the technical aspects of the project, and I will hit upon the special permit criteria after he's done.
Okay, thank you. The total length of the, of the stairway is 133 feet. It's four feet from outside to outside. As TJ said, it's a 10-foot wide easement. We're placing the stairway and landings three and a half feet from that southerly property line. As you know, three foot is the minimum setback for stairways to property lines. So that leaves about another two and a half feet on the other side of the stairs to the limit of the, of the easement. It will be constructed of wood framing, except for the last section will be a removable aluminum section that's going to be removed during the off-season and stored either up, up at the top or, or within the stairway system itself. The total elevation drop is about 53 feet from the top to the, to the beach. As TJ said, we're still in review process with the Conservation Commission, but I noted on the plan, you can see the pink area and the sort of greenish area at the end of the stairs. Those areas have been recently replanted and stabilized with the slope stabilization plan done by the owners of the property. So we're being sensitive on how we go over that stabilization system, and we are going to be using environmentally sensitive methods for the installation of the footings. We're installing helical piers that get screwed into the ground, and then the posts sit on top of those helical screws, so there's no excavation work required. There obviously will be some damage or trampling during the construction. That's part of the mitigation work that we're proposing. There is a partial footpath there that you can see on the plan from the top, and then it sort of disintegrates. There's no real defined footpath, but if you would visit the site, you would see you still can traverse within that easement to get to the beach, but it's obviously not, not very safe, so the stairs will, will take care of that. And then the stairway, like most stairways, I'm sure you've seen in the past, there'll be adequate spacing and height over the ground so that the vegetation will have enough light and be able to continue to grow and maintain that stable surface. We are hiring a botanist to go out there and come up with a more detailed plan that they asked for. We provided some information, but they wanted additional information. I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any engineering questions. Thank you.
Oh, very good. Do you want to go just go in, just go over the criteria now, counsel?
Sure, be happy to, Madam Chair, thank you. So when it comes to the special permit criteria, board is very well familiar with that, but a special permit may be granted when it's found that the use itself would not be more detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood and the town. detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood and the town, and when the proposed use involves would be in harmony with the general purpose and the intent of the bylaw. We believe we've achieved that with this proposed project, bearing in mind the recently approved projects both at 500 and 498. Taking a look at each criteria itself, we do believe that the site is adequate and suitable for what's being proposed. Again, this is no different than what ZBA and Conservation has already approved with the neighbors' stairwells. If the board does have any concern about construction efforts, or future construction efforts, I should say, we've agreed that all construction vehicles will be off-site, and the plans have noted substantial efforts in terms of, in terms of putting things together. Everything's going to be brought in essentially by hand, so there's little to no impact on the immediate environment. I would say that there is really no impact on traffic flow and safety. There's really no impact on the neighborhood's visual character. Again, you've approved these stairwells to the north and to the south. It's expected with the remedial planting, everything will grow in, so there really won't be any concern of views and vistas. Adequacy of utilities, none are being proposed. This is a simple stairwell. There's no electricity, no water for rent stations, no lights being proposed, no storage of whatsoever, just a simple stairwell. When it comes to noise and litter, I don't think there's any concern there as well. And the compatibility of the surrounding land use with other, with other properties nearby with proposed stairwells, we believe that this is in keeping with the neighborhood. And then the overall impact of the natural environment, when you take into consideration the remedial plantings that we're looking into and what's already been proposed with the beach grass that's going to be underneath the structure, we believe that there's no concern there.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please make it known. Seeing none, we have two correspondences. First one, as usual, Judith Giorgio writes on August 6, 2024, "I have no concerns about this proposal." And that's a health agent. Next, we have a note from the Conservation Commission, and the applicant submitted a notice of intent. It was heard on June 12. And August 7, the project will be scheduled for, and whatever conditions to meet the rules for that. Anybody wish to speak against this application or ask a specific question? We see Attorney Litchfield rises to the occasion. He's going to pass out some documents to prove his case. And counsel, you will have a time to rebut at the end of this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome back, Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield, who, as you may recall, I represent Stephen Stacey Brierton, who owned the property on which the easement is located. With me today is Adam Zager. This is actually more of a question rather than opposition. And because I'm respectful of your protocols, it would have been better, I suppose, to raise this before the presentation was made. But I have a question as to whether this is actually properly before the board. These definitions in district regulations are 40, Section 3 District Regulations, the middle block, describes an accessory use as a barn, a boathouse, a garage, a swimming pool, a tennis court, a private residential garage, and similar accessory structures. So I think we could assume from that that stairs are similar accessory structures. They're not a single-family dwelling. They're an accessory to a single-family dwelling. Then we go up to Section 2 at the top, from our bylaws definition of an accessory use or building, means a use or building customarily subordinate to the principal use or building located on the same lot, except as in the footnote below. The footnote below, in Appendix 1, Footnote 3, says that accessory uses shall be located on the same lot as a principal use, except that ZBA may grant a special permit to locate such use on an unimproved lot. So if the applicant owns 498 and 500 Shore Road is vacant, is an unimproved lot, then you can by special permit grant relief if you see fit. But plainly, 500 Shore Road is not an unimproved lot. The property is certainly improved, and the applicant is proposing to do something that I don't think is allowed by the bylaw. Mr. Briggs may need to weigh in on that, or perhaps someone else may need to weigh in. But based on the plain language in the bylaw, I don't think the application can properly be heard or the relief granted.
Mr. Briggs?
Thanks for having me here today. I really appreciate it. I would need to give this some serious consideration. It's not a decision I want to make right here, right now.
No, and we don't want you to. Okay. Does anybody on the board want to say? David Nixon? Go ahead.
No, I agree with Mr. Briggs that this should go to a higher level than what we have here. And so I would suggest to the applicant that they ask for a continuation, and so that this matter can be discussed within the building department. And when we come back, we can go further or not. I think that's what makes sense here.
Who's that person online I see?
That's Adam Zager. I'm also counsel for the trust that owns the property, on behalf of Stephen and Stacey Brierton.
So you'd be part of the rebuttal on this, I take it?
Yeah, I just wanted to amplify what Bill said also, that despite the fact that we have only one applicant listed on the application, this is actually an access easement that had been set up for actually four different parties. So in addition to the issue that my brother counsel just raised with respect to the accessory use not being eligible for a special permit on an improved lot, you also have the issue where you're essentially allowing a multifamily use in the single-family zone, which we also believe is highly problematic.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So what would you like to do, counsel?
If I could just briefly address concerns that were brought up. First off, I'd be happy to have a further conversation with the building commissioner moving this project forward. When it does come to Attorney Zager's concerns and Attorney Litchfield's concerns, I would certainly address, one, address the bylaws, and two, certainly not trying to hide the ball with the ZBA. It's been well-known throughout this process, especially with the commission, that the easement applies to four homeowners on Aunt Lydia's Way, 16, 17, Aunt Lydia's Way, 485, and 499.
Right.
So I just want to make that clear. The easement language itself appears not only on the Briertons' deed, but all of our clients' deeds as well. So from a titles aspect, that's unique. You don't always get that. Sometimes easement language is hiding somewhere at the registry of deeds. So I just wanted to make that clear. As far as any sort of continuance goes, be happy to do that, and talk to the building commissioner about moving this project forward with the ZBA.
All right, that's very fair. Thank you. Paul?
Do we need to set a date, or are we anticipating?
Yeah. How about late September? Does that sound right?
We are meeting with Conservation on September 11th, and my apologies, I didn't look, I did not look at your meetings that far in advance.
Our September 12 meeting is booked, so it would be September 26 at the earliest.
So we'd have to take the 26th, then?
Yeah.
I'll move to grant the request of continuance to September 26, 2024.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
David Nixon?
I agree.
And Ginny?
Yes.
And Paul?
As do I.
Thank you very much for your patience, and we'll see you in September.
Thank you for your time this evening.
As the song says.
I will move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds. Vote yes.
Say what time it is. Right? What time is it?
Well, no to vote.
Oh, vote to adjourn? All right, we'll vote to adjourn. David Nixon?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Everybody.
Everybody, yes.
I said yes.
Sorry, Lee?
Yes.
Eve? Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
As do I. And now, what time is it?
6:30 PM.
Good night, Chatham.